Okay, we will begin our special board meeting on Thursday, September 28th. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Bryner.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Jesslyn.
President.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all [inaudible].
Okay, good evening. Before we get started, I want to take a moment to share some expectations of this meeting, which is intended to be a work session for the Board. As always, the community is welcome to be here with us, and we thank you for your interest in our schools. As we are trying to work through an array of topics this evening as a Board, there will not be an opportunity for the audience to speak or participate. But please know, comments from the community members are welcome during the hearing of the public section of our regularly scheduled meetings. In response to the concern that was raised by Mrs. Payne last week in regard to video recordings of meetings, specifically Policy 1.11, we are video recording tonight's meeting. Please note, over the past 12 years, we have not typically video-recorded any special Board meetings or work sessions. The meetings were always documented by the Board minutes. But after reviewing our policy and to ensure we are alignment, in alignment with last current, with that current policy, at this time, we will take video of each Board meeting. Last week, because of the Board's concern with videoing the meeting, coupled with the public's concern of not being able to record the meeting, we made the decision to adjourn and give time to review our practices. I would like to clear up the law surrounding recording meetings. It is important to note, the Board has the right to regulate our meetings, which could include not allowing video to be taken without prior approval. Our current policy does require pre-arranged recording approval, which is meant to limit disruptions. We heard your concern about not being able to video-record the meeting last week, and hope we have come to a mutual benefit for both the Board and the public. Being able to record meetings moving forward while also following the policies in place. As we get this work session underway, please keep in mind, tonight's meeting is open to the public, but it is not a public meeting. That is, it is a meeting for the Board to conduct its business in purview of the community, but not to have public participation. As the Board President, it is my job to enforce the rules of the meeting so that the Board can conduct its business. We kindly ask everyone to respect the expectations of this evening's meeting. We are all invested in Mentor Schools and care deeply about our students and staff. We are all committed to working hard for our community's children and providing a high-quality education where students can learn and grow academically, socially, and emotionally. There is a lot of work to do tonight, and I look forward to getting meaningful conversation and discussion underway among the Board. Thank you for your cooperation. Now, we'll move on to Board of Education report and recommendations. Under Business, we'll start with Board Relations and Procedures.
So, at this time, I would invite Cheryl Ryan to help facilitate our first part of our conversation this evening. Cheryl, thanks for joining us again.
Sure, happy to be here. And I'm really glad that you took the steps that you did to allow for the video recording of the meeting and, as your community has requested, and that you are looking at your policies, which we're going to talk about in this. So, we're going to talk about that and a bunch of other things. And as I said last time, the reason that this workshop is scheduled and is included as part of the search that the Board did to bring Superintendent Heath to the community is to allow all of you who have come from different places in life and different experiences in school buildings and in school districts to make sure your expectations are talked about in an open way. I find these workshops to be more personally enriching when everybody contributes and when there's open discussion. And if you have questions, I hope that you will ask them. I always say that sometimes the way that you do things, you know, the Mentor way in your case, is perfectly legal and perfectly okay. If it's quite different from what I find in my usual experience, I'll share that with you. And if you have something that seems to be hanging you up, and I can offer a best practice, I'd be happy to do that as well. So, we'll just get started, and I'm not a save questions till the end person. So, if I say anything, let's stop, and if you have a question or a comment, offer it, and we'll fill it, we'll fill in the blanks. Does that sound good for everybody? And I'm sorry, and let me make sure, you know, I can dance back and forth a little bit. So, here we go. So, again, our ground rules for the evening, as I've just said, is it's about discussion. There are no times, according to the law in Ohio, where the five Board members can sit and talk outside of a meeting that's open to the public, right? So, occasionally, you might meet in twos, or occasionally, you might have a one-to-one phone call, and that's perfectly fine. But the Board meeting, whether it's a regular meeting, or a special meeting, or a committee meeting, is the only time that the five of you can talk, and usually in concert with your administrators, namely, your Treasurer and your Superintendent. So, that's important. Honoring the opinions and input of all of you, I know that I have been at your Board meetings, and I know that you try and do that at every meeting. But particularly at this workshop, if people have a differing opinion, I hope that we can honor that, and that you can leave resolved, and hopefully feeling like you're on solid ground in terms of your expectations versus somebody else's. And, you know, it's, I always say, one of the things that I think a Superintendent can benefit most from, a Treasurer can benefit most from, and Board members, is to be specific with one another. A couple of years ago, I was doing a Board meeting, I was monitoring a Board meeting, and one of the Board members asked the Superintendent when she might get a certain report that he'd requested, and she said, "I'll get it to you sometime in the next few days." And that can even leave people's feelings hurt, or open the door for feelings to be hurt. So, if I can say one thing, it would be to try and be specific with one another, particularly in Board meetings. If you think you can get something back to the Board by Friday, say Friday. And if you are a Board member and you really want something in the next 48 hours, or say that. And if you say, "Absolutely, this is not a crisis, I would like this, but please put it at the bottom of your priority list," you know, say that as well. Okay. So, these are some of the things that I thought we would talk about with your new Superintendent, is your leadership team. I refer to the leadership team as the seven of you around this table. Oftentimes, districts, your Superintendent probably has a district leadership team or something very similar to that. But for my purposes, the leadership team is the Board Superintendent and Treasurer. We'll talk a little bit about roles and responsibilities, specifically, the interplay between your roles and responsibilities and what the law says about the separation of those. Some best practices about relationships and leadership, the way that we take care of each other, and the way that we want to work together. And we're going to talk a little bit about meetings, communication, and then your strategic plan is folded in here too. Actually, it's toward the front. So, I really believe this is true. I like a lot of the things Robert Marzano does and says. The first word in this sentence is really important, and it's about whether you want to be effective or not. And effective school board teams act as a team. The law says that everything you do is as a team. It is by vote, hopefully much of the time unanimous, but it is by majority vote. Your personal opinion, your personal thoughts, your personal philosophies are really important. They are an important part of that mix that ends up, in the end, with your approving or not approving recommendations and votes. But effectiveness is your being able to have those discussions as a team, coming from your different, unique perspectives, and then working with your Superintendent and Treasurer, so that even when you disagree, and even when, especially when you agree, that collaboration and trust is improved. So, how to recognize effective teams. A shared mission and vision, and you refer to them consistently for guidance. I work with a lot of Boards that have a strategic plan, as you do. But once the strategic plan is finalized and put on the website, it's usually not referred to in the Board meetings, and I think it's a critical mistake. So, we're going to talk a little bit about that. They work to maintain a climate of trust and openness. This is critical, right? This is really critical, that all of you feel like you can call one another on the phone and have a conversation. Maggie, you could call Jenny, Jenny, you could call Tom, and you could have a conversation, and you can be open and honest about your feelings, and that you can be open also in the Board meeting, whether it's a committee meeting, a special meeting, Board meeting, et cetera. The leadership team respects one another in their roles. You have hired a CFO and a CEO who you believe are capable of leading your district, and you need to allow them to do that. They need to be guided by you, they need your feedback, they will want your feedback, and we'll talk a little bit about that. But they are incredibly experienced. As a former Board member and somebody who absolutely loves working with Superintendents and Treasurers, I can tell you that those are not easy jobs. They are very, very difficult jobs, among the most difficult, I think, of any, but also very important, right? We're growing littles into biggies, and we want biggies who are healthy and capable. So, your Superintendent and your Treasurer are really important to your district. We want communication that is honest, equal, and timely, and that means for everybody. So, we'll talk a little bit about how that is accomplished and how you do that here in Mentor. Diversity of thought and opinion is valued and seen as an asset. This is really important, right? So, as I said, the only time you get a chance to work as a set of seven is at a publicly announced meeting. So, your thoughts on things, whether it's the draft agenda and something that you're struggling with as you come together for that agenda, whether it's just something maybe happening in the district that you want to come on, that you want to comment on, or that you have a question about, that's important. And that you all stay in touch with the greater good, or your strategic plan. And your strategic plan says a lot about student achievement and that kind of thing. It's, I wish I had a dollar for every time a Board member or an administrator has said to me that we're all here for the kids. That should go absolutely without saying, but a lot of people say it and don't always act as though that's really how they feel. So, I hope that if that is truly how all of you feel, that you will make a conscious decision at the start of every Board meeting, that you will try and stay in touch with that So, this is a little bit about what the revised code or legislation says, or your jobs as a Board member. I've been doing this for a long time, and every time I do a new Board member training, new Board members, some in the audience will be surprised at what their job is and what their job is not. Many people become Board members without actually knowing what their job is and what is it, what it is not. And sometimes, that's really difficult until you are in the work, right? It's really difficult until you are in the work. But you are responsible for hiring and evaluating a Superintendent, CEO, and a Treasurer, CFO. So, the law says that you should evaluate those two administrators annually. Law does not say how you should do it. You can do it any way you want. And again, if I had a dollar for all the different ways people, districts evaluate their Superintendent and Treasurer, I would probably be able to retire. Well, maybe not retire, but anyway, I could buy a nice dinner. So, but you should do that. I think taking a good look, when you have new Board members, about the way you evaluate, the cycle, the key steps in your evaluation, particularly in comparing them with the way your current Superintendent is used to being evaluated, that's a really good conversation to have. What has worked for him in his past employment, what he wished his former Boards had done differently, comparing that to the way you all do it in Mentor, et cetera, would be a really good conversation. There are great materials on the OSBA website about it. I love talking about it. Most people don't, but if you ever want to talk about your evaluation process, I would, I'd be happy to talk about that with you.
Hey Cheryl.
Yeah.
For the evaluation process for the Treasurer and CFO, if you had ideas about what that should look like, or, you know, that discussion that you were talking about, would that be an executive session, then?
I would say no.
No, okay.
It could be.
Okay.
And some districts will do it that way. Because you were talking about actual people here.
Yeah.
If you were saying, "I think we should evaluate Craig on this," or "I wish we had more response from Bill in this area," then I would say, "Absolutely." If you're talking just about the process.
Yeah.
Like, our calendar for evaluation, or the steps we ask them to take in preparing a self-evaluation to bring to the Board, I would say you could do that in public session.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Your job is to provide the annual budget and appropriations. A lot of times, that's tied to facilities. You are blessed here in Mentor with beautiful facilities, and I know that you have a master facilities plan, is that right? That you continue to work with. But all of that is part and parcel of the Board's responsibility in terms of managing the budget, making sure you end the black, end in the black every year. There are many districts in the state that go into what we call deficit spending, when they cannot end in the black without dipping into their savings account. So, we try really hard, as an association, to work with our legislature in terms of state funding and helping districts with funding. But there's never enough to go around, and I've never worked with a district yet that told me they had too much money. So, that is a really tough job of the Board, is analyzing your budget, working with your Treasurer to make sure that you're allocating money appropriately and legally. And that you work as a leadership team to guide, monitor, and evaluate progress. That is a governance job. Making sure that whatever gaps you've identified as a district, in tandem with your Superintendent, are being addressed, and how you're doing that, talking with your Superintendent about how he's working with his team on addressing those gaps, talking with your Superintendent about the different kinds of data that you might use to do that monitoring and evaluation. We all know about the state report card, we all just love the state report card. But that should not be your only barometer, right? There are tons of things you're doing here in Mentor, either as teachers and as administrators, whether it's through committee work, or whether it's through projects, or whether it's through grants, that are moving the needle for you, and those are pieces of data that the Board should know and see, so that you have something to talk about at your meetings beside the report card. Not to say that the report card isn't important. It is the way the state measures your progress as a district, and so we do need to pay attention to it. But it should not be the only thing that you use. So practically speaking, the Board of Education, and for those of you in the audience, I apologize if these colors aren't friendly to you, they always look better on your laptop than they do on a screen. But adopts and approves policies for governance of the district. That is probably the most important role you have. And that can also be kind of frustrating, because sometimes you don't have any choice about the policy, right? So, your policy manual as a district is probably somewhere between 400 and 500 policies, if you are like an average district. And a great many of those policies are mandated. They're mandated by the Federal Department of Education or the State Department of Education. They could also be mandated by the city of Mentor. There are probably a few policies in there that are Mentor Public Schools-specific. They were created five years, or 10 years, or 15 years ago, because the Board of Education at that time said, "We need a policy on X." And those are policies that I think need to be, take a regular look at, because sometimes the conditions change in a district, and the policy you needed five years ago that really did a good job isn't needed so much. And a story from my own experience as a Board member, in fact, Mr. Heath, you may have still been in Hilliard City Schools. For those of you that don't know, I was a Board member in Hilliard City Schools, and Craig was a principal at the time, right? An age ago, right? We created a policy, our Board did, in Hilliard, on fan behavior in the stands. Because we had just opened the second high school of three, which are there now, and the kids got along fine, the kids in both high schools, but guess what? The parents didn't. And we needed to create a policy that would put some infrastructure around tools that would allow our principals to monitor and to politely ask unruly fans to leave the athletic engagements if they couldn't abide by the golden rule. So, those are the kinds of policies that, Hilliard may not have that policy anymore. They may have archived that policy, but those are the kinds of policies I'm speaking about. The Board sets district goals and objectives and is accountable to them. Talk more about that in just a bit. The Board considers, approves, or rejects recommendations of the Superintendent. That's really important. A huge amount of your work as a Board is pro forma, right? You're not going to question a majority of the things the Superintendent or the Treasurer bring to the table. They're running the schools every day. And so, much of the decision-making that they have done, the homework, to bring you an honest recommendation about what they do feel is best for the district, will not be argued by you. It may be discussed, and that's a good thing. But there are times that you'll have a discussion that will lead to one or more of you voting no, and there may be something, very rarely, that happens where you have three of you voting no, and that would be a rejection. You evaluate district programs and student achievement. We've talked a little bit about that, and we'll talk some more about that. And you inform the public and weigh public opinion. I think this is really important. Administrators, you may know by law, do not have to live in the school district where they work. Teachers do not have to live in the school district where they work. Board members do. It varies from district to district, the proportion of their paid staff that work, that live and work in the district, but Board members do. And therefore, you are living next to neighbors, you are living next to the people you see in the grocery store, at the gas station, or in the library, and hopefully, they are speaking with you. And I believe that most Superintendents and Treasurers appreciate when you can share with them what you're hearing in the district. And they will put that into the funnel of all the other things they are hearing from teachers and everything else. It also is a great, a great, a great tool for informing the public is through your Board meeting, and it's also through a community survey, something like working through your strategic plan. I'm a big advocate of doing a community survey every 18 months to two years, and however you do that is up to you. It's free and easy to do, you can do it on your own, you can hire somebody to help you. But I think a community survey using many of the same questions each time and adding in a few that are currently more relevant is a good thing to do. Okay, your most important duty is to be accountable to the district's mission and vision, because that ties you to your purpose. So, Mentor redid a strategic plan in 2018. I hope this is still accurate, I got this off your website. Inspiring students today to reach their potential tomorrow. And you have a mission statement that says you will ensure a safe learning environment, provide a balanced, high-quality education, make the best use of the district resources which have been entrusted to you by your community, and encourage strong community partnerships.
We've added that to the back of our meeting.
Oh, good, good for you, awesome.
So, we all have that, is it just that?
Just as I said, I hope that you will be, that that will be a touchstone for you at every Board meeting. That's awesome. I'm going to share that with other districts. So, my biggest thing about a strategic plan, as much as I love vision and mission, is your goals and your goal areas. I very much believe that everything you're asking your Superintendent to do, everything you're asking your Treasurer to do, everything the five of you are talking about and doing, and everything, everybody in your district is doing, on down to whatever you want to say, all through the organizational chart to the bottom. Those people should be doing something that is directly tied to one or more of these goals, right? This is what makes doing either a Board self-assessment, or doing a Superintendent evaluation, or a Treasurer evaluation, and as far as I'm concerned, principal evaluations, coach evaluations, second-grade literacy coach evaluations, they should all be tied to this. So, if you can envision a matrix, because I'm a sort of a spreadsheet person, that has the four goals across the top, and it has some of Mentor's improvement plan stuff on the left side, you have these goals at the top, everybody should be able to put the stuff they're doing, and it should cross in those boxes. So, the example I always use, for example, you've got resources as your number-three pillar. I would love it if your Transportation Director said to one of your bus drivers at the beginning of the year, "Jerry, I'm so glad to have you as part of our team." As you know, one of the goals in our district is taking care of our community resources. So, you're going to be evaluated this year, along with other bus drivers, based on your safety record, because safety record means we have healthy buses, and we don't have fender benders, and we don't spend money repairing buses. So, at the end of the year, when Jerry comes back and hasn't had a single fender bender and has shown up on time and all those kinds of things, I hope the Transportation Director can say, "You were directly responsible for meeting one of the key goals set for us by our Board of Education. You have done a part in moving this district forward, and I can tell you that Jerry's morale goes up," right? If everybody in your district believes that everything they're doing is moving the needle on these four things, you will definitely improve. So, policy, as I said, it's one of the things that truly guides your district. It is the what and why. It is the what and why, what we're doing and why we're doing it in this district. Many of your policies will be tied to things like safety, budget, instruction. Then there are things related to health, there are things related to your facilities. It's part and parcel of everything you're doing in the district. It does affect your direction, and it keeps you legally and ethically compliant. I know that you, as a district, are talking about the way your policy is written and monitored, and how you all are doing that, and how, whatever agency that you retain to help you with your policy, how they help you do that, and that's really, really important. Because what it does is it aligns administrative responsibilities, and it directs decision-making. And as a Board, I always said, "My policy was our armor." I would always refer to Board policy, because it helped me know, when I was at a Board meeting, or when I was in the community talking to people, that I was being really consistent, really legal, and really fair, right? So, when I hear stories at OSBA on the phone from Board members that are complaining about other Board members either showing favoritism to particular staff, or favoritism to particular families, I always, I always say, "What's your policy say?" It's my very first question. Annie, when you were talking just a little bit ago about evaluation, you know, I would say, "What's your evaluation policy say? How do you do it?" That should be your first and your go-to, especially after you get to a point where you all feel really good about your policy manual. Any questions about this?
Cheryl, if somebody during the public meeting brings up a policy, let's say, in discussion, would it be wise for all of us to kind of pull that up and look at it?
Do you, is your policy online?
Yeah.
And it's easy for y'all to find at a meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I probably would.
Okay.
Yeah. Or you could, I don't know if you AirPlay, whatever, but, you know, you could bring it up so that everybody could see it. Okay, so, you are all the Governors. You know, I always tell Board members, "Did you know you're a politician now?" And people say, "Oh, I'm not a politi-" "Well, did you run for election?" Yeah. So, but you are the Governors of your district. You are where the buck really stops, and it should. But there's a definite difference between the Board and the administration. So, this is kind of related to policy. This is how I like to see, in the best world, the policies working. So, let's just say the Legislature comes up with a policy and says that chocolate ice cream must be served in every school district on Fridays, okay? And you think that's funny, but I think they've come up with policies that are equally interesting. But anyway, another conversation. So, they say you have to serve chocolate ice cream in your buildings on Fridays, but they don't say how you have to serve it. They don't have to say if it's breakfast, or lunch, or at the end of the day. They don't say whether food service has to make it, or whether you can purchase it from a contractor, whatever. So, your policy committee, do you have one of those as a Board committee? Do you have a Board committee that does policy, or how's that done?
No, yeah.
Not currently. Not currently. So, right now, you are doing policy as a work of the whole, right? Which is fine, you can do it either way. Many districts do policy as a work of the whole Board, and many districts have a policy committee. There are some pros and cons to each, but you can do it the way you're doing it, for sure. So, your Superintendent would come to you and say, "We've just found out, we need to have a policy on serving chocolate ice cream on Fridays." This is the language the state says has to be in the policy, but that's it. We can then decorate that policy any way we want. So, many of your policies will have language you must include, and some of them won't. But the Board is going to review the language and talk about the language that you all want in the policy, or if you do develop a policy committee, that your policy committee has suggested, the policy say. Then the Superintendent and Treasurer and their administrators are going to work together and say, "How does this look for Mentor?" In Mentor, we have a food service staff that loves making ice cream, so we're going to make the ice cream ourselves, whatever it is. They're going to get together, and they're going to help the Board understand how they're going to- how they're going to take what the legislature has said and make it work for Mentor. Then all of you are going to talk about the pros and cons. And that, I think, is mostly the superintendent's job, and oftentimes, in partnership with the treasurer. If we do it this way, it's going to cost more. If we do it this way, it's going to cost less, but we're going to use more staff time. Whatever it is, I think questions the board should always be asking are the pros and cons and the trade-offs. And although I think it makes more work for the superintendent, I hope he comes prepared to a lot of meetings saying, ah, I knew you were going to ask that. This is what I see as the reasons why I think this route is the best route to take. The board is then going to make an informed decision, and then you implement, and the administration manages the policy.
Cheryl, one of the complications of drafting policy, especially wording, making sure that it's compliant with the law, but also those larger legal considerations, because there's so many unknowns or sometimes hidden legal entanglements that go. Maybe chocolate ice cream on Friday unless you've got chocolate allergies.
Right, and your policy will talk about, what do you do about the children who have juvenile diabetes, and you know, all of those things.
So, but for us to draft wording sometimes has to have that additional layer of kind of a legal framework.
Sure.
And how do you meld that so that it's efficient? Because that's a big cost.
It's, it's difficult. Now, a new policy manual, or an updated policy manual, will have legal cross-references. So at the bottom of every policy, it'll have the names of the three, or four, or five other policies that are impacted by this policy. So with the chocolate ice cream policy, you're probably going to reference the juvenile diabetes insulin policy. Right? Or something about, I don't know, refrigeration. Who the heck knows? I don't know. So all, but you're exactly right. Every one of your policies needs to have those important cross-references, because you want to make sure that not only are you in alignment with legislative requirements and legal requirements, but that one of your policies is not conflicting with another one.
So based on your experience, and maybe both yours, Bill, and yours, Craig, would we be wise to kind of set aside our big ad hoc Frankenstein policy manual in favor of something that's streamlined, coordinated better, and in order to shake out some of those problems, such as, and we, we say this, but then we say something that contradicts it down the page, because otherwise, I'm not sure how best we would go about doing that in a way that would resolve more problems and prevent future ones.
Yeah, some districts, when they go to rewrite their policy manual, or do a broad overhaul, let's just call it an overhaul, some districts start sort of policy by policy, or chapter by chapter, like they do the facilities policies, and then they do the budget policies, et cetera. And they do it chapter by chapter. Sometimes they just say, we're going to toss this baby out, and we're going to start with a clean policy manual from some provider, whether it's OSBA, or Neola, or your legal counsel, whoever does it for you. And we're, we're going to start with a clean policy manual and go from there. But then you have to build in all your Mentor specifics, right? And that is really what you're, the consultant, whoever it is you hire, that's what they're paid to do.
And so Craig and Bill, you have--
You talk, but I just wanted to, you talk about streamlined. I don't think there is a streamlined policy, but--
But just so that it's not filled with little pitfalls that, because, you know, it is a massive series of documents. And when you're reading through, it can seem completely reasonable and logical, because you hadn't thought of a kid who's a vegan, and we're serving ice cream.
Right.
You know, or the family's a vegan, and the--
Right.
The temptation of the ice cream is going to create a problem. So it's very hard to just read it over, because generally, it'll sound reasonable. And sometimes, the part that doesn't is the part that has to be in there.
Right.
Because it's the wording from--
Right.
The ORC. And you're like, oh, great, then that's the part I was going to toss.
Yeah.
Clearly, I can't do that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, just that process, because I think we've revealed to ourselves that there, there needs to be some sort of an overhaul, but to do it in a way that's coherent and doesn't take five years.
Well, one of the things I would suggest is, once you have your, even maybe even before, depending on how long it's going to take to have an overhauled policy manual, is that at a board meeting, one of your agenda items could be, let's look at all of our policies that have to do with children with physical disabilities. Right? There's going to be health policies. There's going to be facilities policies. There's going to be learning and instruction policies. There's going to be IEP-related policies that all have to do with those kids. Right? But, but that allows you to look at in a way that does that kind of across the thing, so you can make sure that our facilities policy about helping the wheelchair-bound child is not in, not out of compliance with an IEP policy about that child. So occasionally, I think it's great, not only to look chapter by chapter in your policy manual, but just to look at a topic. You know, what, what are all the policies that refer to field trips? Right? And then you're talking about transportation, and safety, and training of staff, and a bunch of different things. So I do agree with you that it's, it's difficult, and it's unwieldy, but when you can go to bed at night as a board member and feel like your policy's clean and modern, and you're following it, it takes a load off your chest.
With the districts that you have facilitated with, how, what kind of a timeline would be one that you've seen as a reasonable, efficient, and successful?
To totally rewrite a policy manual, six to 12 months.
Okay, so.
So Bill, Bill and I are smiling a little bit, because we, we've reached out to a couple of organizations to see what this process may be, and, and that's exactly what we were told today as well. We're going to have a couple more meetings to kind of get a, a sense of, you know, what type of undertaking this will be, and, and what those successful processes would be to, to put in place as, as a group to, to do that massive overhaul. And then hopefully, we'll talk again here soon to, to be able to see, okay, this is the process that we, we would like to embark upon, if, if this is indeed something that we want to do as a group.
Would it make sense, since it sounds like there's some similarities to the process of doing the strategic plan, where you're inviting in a lot of discussion and voices to, to try to do the best job you can, that truly reflects our local community? Because that's, that's the most important, that we are delivering a personalized version of school governance that meets the needs of this community. So if we're doing that in chunks, could we perhaps kind of approach it as a forerunner to the new strategic plan? Because it doesn't make sense to do a strategic plan with old policies. Is kind of how I look at it. And the other piece is, I thought the 2018 strategic plan was so well thought out, and so well coordinated across all kinds of stakeholders, and it really was a, a very clean and successful document that has been implemented. It's not a dusty relic. That, does that make some sense, that maybe for the next year, rather than starting strategic planning review, that we do the policies, and maybe one year from now, then we could begin the new strategic plan? I mean, I don't, I don't know. Is that?
And I, I think that's got to be part of the conversation as we go throughout the year here, too. And again, we've already started some of these stakeholder group meetings, and talking to different individuals, and getting some feedback on, you know, what is important in our community right now. And there may be a couple of action steps, maybe, that we can tweak for the strategic plan to, to kind of milk that for one more year, so that we continue that work while we're doing some of the board policy pieces to the puzzle. And then, you know, again, I, it, is it a case where the strategic plan needs a major overhaul? Or does it just need a couple tweaks here and there, based on what the needs are? So I think there's still some study and some evaluation to do on that strategic plan this year. But I, I get the sense that board policy seems to be a, a, kind of at the forefront of a, a lot of what we're, you know, kind, we're kind of working through here right now, so that I'd probably put some, some priority to that.
It does, I think it makes a lot of sense in terms of being able to respond in a way that has logic to it--
Right.
--before we're doing additional work. And perhaps, if we are inviting in those across the district contributors, stakeholders, that maybe they'd stay on to work on the strategic plan as a secondary part of this--
Absolutely.
--process, you know? So you wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel--
Absolutely.
--when it's time to do the next step.
Cheryl, I have a couple of questions, too. You mentioned community survey. What does that typically look like? I like that idea, especially if we're going to talk about, you know, possibly changing their, or altering the strategic--
Have we done a community survey? And how recent?
Have we done community, or I thought we just did parents?
Is it parents, Mary?
We've done all kinds of surveys.
Okay.
You'd have to see what--
Kristin.
Yeah, between Kristin, and I know Bill, through Gallup.
Gallup surveys are done, Lighthouse surveys are done, more general sort of community reach-out surveys are done. Oftentimes, they ask, they ask parents and community members. It's, I would say, in general, a lot of them want to gauge everybody's perception of, you know, the work that's being done in the district, the quality of teaching and learning, the quality of career opportunities for students, the quality of the staff, the quality, you know, how, you know, all of those kinds of things.
I find that interesting, because you said 18 months to two years. And I think that, I don't know when we did the last community survey, but that would be, I think, beneficial to us, especially if we are going to eventually ask for, you know, PI levy on top of renewal, or something like that. I'd rather know now if there is an issue, so that we could try to address it before, you know--
Sure, and your community doesn't want you to ask for how they, how they feel when there's a levy on the ballot.
Right.
Right? It's important, but they want to hear from you all the time. And there are a lot of ways for your community to interact with you, as, as you've talked about at your board meetings, through strategic planning, through focus groups, or whatever it is that you do. But a survey, particularly if you do it every couple of years, or every three years, it provides a great baseline for the ups and downs of how your community feels.
Craig, can you follow up on that?
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
And how do you get a scientifically valid sample? That's, that's--
It's a really hard thing to do, because most, most districts survey, and they just say, please, would everybody complete this survey? And you push it out a myriad of ways. You know, on your website, through your Facebook page, on the marquees outside, outside here, outside on Center Street. So, I mean, you, you make sure everybody has the link. Most surveys now are done all through smartphone. Right? I think the only thing you can do as a district is offer the opportunity, and make it available, and make it easy for people to do, and then you just, you just hope. But it's very difficult to, to make sure that these people definitely answer the survey. I think it's all in how well it's marketed and communicated.
To get a good representative sample, so you're making sound decisions based on, you know, a good snapshot--
I think, I think you will.
--of how the community and the voters feel.
I think you will. This is an invested community.
Good.
And the policies, ours do have the ORC at the bottom with the codes, you know, so we can look it up. It also has the federal codes on there. But moving forward, with any kind of changes that may be coming down, you know, from the legislature, is there ever anything that's like highlighted, and so that we know that this particular verbiage is coming right from, you know, legal, and then the rest of this is our opinion, or, you know, just so we can see it visually?
It's a good question. I don't, I don't, well, Bill, why don't you--
It depends on who you use. So like Neola will tell you, because I have experience, so I can't speak to OSBA, but Neola will tell you, here's the policy updates twice a year, and sometimes they'll do an update that comes out of something that came out sooner that needs to be implemented, based on that. So they'll tell you that these are recommendations, and these are requirements, and then within that, they give you the choices of what you, you know, you have to select one or the other, and then you have to kind of go through, and they kind of highlight how it's supposed to, how it's supposed to flow.
That would be helpful.
And there, and a lot of recommendations are to follow the policies as you're given, and not to adjust too much, because then you may be out of compliance, and then they can't support you, backing you up in that as well.
Yeah, where you see a lot of times, the, the customization of the policy is in, is in the men, the discussion about the Mentor way, how Mentor is going, here's the policy, and now the, what we call the guideline, or the--
Administrative guideline.
Administrative guideline, that backs that policy is, is kind of the Mentor way. OSBA policy is similar, in that we tell you what's mandated language, and you can see in the policy what's mandated, and what's your choice. And then we publish what we call the policy development quarterly, four times a year, that pushes out a newsletter that says, since four months ago, or would it be three months ago, since three months ago, these are the things that have changed, and these are the recommendations we're making, or, and, and the specific policies we're recommending you take a look at for compliance.
So administrative guidelines, we don't have those right now. Is that right? We have no administrative guidelines?
Not really. There, there are some things that might be woven into what we currently have as policy, but are really administrative guidelines. Like when we talked about the, the preferred pronoun piece way back on my second day in, in office here. That was one of the things that, that we talked a lot about, you know? We, we had the policy piece to the puzzle, but, you know, if we approached it more from an administrative guideline, that's something that we, you know, administratively can push out to our, our staff members, our administrators, and say, hey, here, this is the procedure we're going to follow that ties to this particular policy. With, with OSBA, with Neola, those, those two groups have those administrative guidelines kind of laid out already, and those are the things that we can tweak to, to our own specifications here in Mentor.
So what's the difference?
As long as they align to the policy.
As long as they align to the policy.
Yeah, I guess what the, what is the difference, because I'm not familiar with this, administrative guideline versus policy? Like, what's the benefit of having an administrative guideline?
It's probably more detailed than the policy.
The policy is the what, and I would say the guideline is kind of the how.
That's the how you're going to import it.
And is that made like public for people to see, so that you could see the, okay?
Yep. Yeah, it's kind of neat in board docs, the way that's set up then, too. You can actually pull down the, the policy manual, and then you can go back up and, and click on it, and bring down the administrative guidelines. And then the, the numbering system, or the lettering system, whichever organization you're working with, will have the, okay, here's the policy, you know, 1.11, here's administrative guideline, 1.11.
Gotcha.
So that you can kind of see the difference in, in, okay, here's the policy, here's the practice--
Sure.
--so to speak.
Thanks.
Okay.
I had that question. I wanted to know the difference between guideline and policy.
And policy.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so here's, I've got a few slides that just talk a little bit about where your roles split. But in general, I think the most effective teams, as we said at the very first slide almost, is you work together. And so even if it's the superintendent's job, or the treasurer's job to do something, many times, they will be speaking to the board about their feelings about something before they actually do the work. But when it comes to personnel, in the state of Ohio, nobody can be hired in Mentor without the recommendation of the superintendent. And that is a law that changed maybe 10 years ago. It used to be that people could be hired by the district on the recommendation of a board member, frankly. But now, everybody comes to the district through the recommendation of the superintendent. He's responsible for the supervision and evaluation of all other staff in the district, save the treasurer and those who report directly to the treasurer. The superintendent has established procedures for evaluation, and it's his job to make sure that everybody he supervises is also doing a good job of evaluation, et cetera. He is your liaison with the staff. He is your liaison with other administrators. And we talked already about a systematic plan of evaluations. Evaluations for teachers and principals are, are much more, what do I want to say? Outlined in law than, than they are for, actually, frankly, for superintendents and treasurers. Your job is to talk and, about the criteria that's used in hiring. So I will often get a call from board members, not, not in Mentor specifically, but board members who will say, how come we don't get to help hire our coaches? How come we don't get to help hire a sixth-grade teacher? Our, our district's building a new library, and I really want to have something to say about the media professional. And that's not usually the board's job. Our recommendation is always that the board approves the recommendations of the superintendent. Now, I think it's a fair question for the board to say, how do we hire people in Mentor? How do we make sure our positions are advertised, so that everybody who might be qualified has an opportunity to see the posting? How do we make sure that we're fair in the way we promote people? What is our process, you know, for internal versus external hiring? I think those are great conversations for the board to have, and I find that when the board members-- I think those are great conversations for the board to have, and I find that when the board members feel confident about the process in the district, also outlined in your policy, they will have confidence in the superintendent's recommendations. So curriculum and instruction. You all establish the vision for the district. You have your strategic plan. Your strategic plan outlines the board's vision for the district and those four things that were in your mission statement that you're going to provide for each of your students and also your staff members. You will adopt changes to the curriculum that are normally brought forward by members of your administrative team or principals. When, when the state report card, for example, in some districts, I worked with a district a year or two ago that went through a huge overhaul of math curriculum at the middle school level. So there were lots of focus groups and it took about a year and, you know, but eventually that comes up to the board for approval. The board reviews and discusses achievement data, as we mentioned, and how you're going to message that to the community, what's going well, what's not going so well, how we're going to address what's not going so well, what the superintendent is recommending that we're going to do to address the fact that our seventh grade civics scores, you know, didn't do so well, whatever it might be. And the board asks for and utilizes data in key decision-making. We, we really want, we really want you to have a good eye on data and to talk about the kind of data that makes sense to you and, and makes sense to your administration. So budget and finance, you all, you all establish priorities for your district. And hopefully you let Bill Wade know every year what the priorities are in terms of managing the budget and finances. You work together as a leadership team. Also, Bill and Craig will let you know what they believe the priorities are for the district in terms of budget. Hopefully you ask questions at your board meeting about how this trend is changing. Do you see differences in this or that? And, and why might something be significantly more expensive this year than it was that last year? That kind of thing. You do, as a board, need to provide leadership in providing resources. So whether that is through your educational foundation or through grants or whether it is through a levy on occasion, we, we dislike it when districts have to go to their community for support, but that's the way the water, water rises in Ohio unfortunately. And until, until laws change, a lot of the burden for educating your students falls on your local community. You review annual audit reports and you make appropriate adjustments to those. You do sign all these documents though. So I hope as a board that you take them very seriously, your annual budget appropriation and your audit that you sign and submit to the state. The treasurer though is your district's budget officer. I find that in most districts, the treasurer is the person that knows most about school finance, the complexities of that. The treasurer usually knows most about your grants and how, how you can legally spend those dollars and how you ethically cannot spend those dollars. Your treasurer knows about when, when your superintendent comes to the treasurer and says, I need more money for this. Usually the treasurer is the person that can say, well, we don't have it in that pot, but I can look for it in this pot. He's going to provide rationale for budgets to help maintain community support. The treasurer is oftentimes the person that answers community questions about the budget, that meets with community members who might even drop by the office and, and certainly answers all your questions at the board meeting. I, I love it when a treasurer makes a report at a board meeting and I love it when a board asks a treasurer to specifically prepare something that would be enlightening for them and for their community at the board meeting. And your treasurer is the financial and legislative resource to the board. Some best practices. Remembering that your authority, not your opinion as an individual is zero. Your opinion is not zero. But your authority as a board member is at the board table and through the vote, right? So when community members want your opinion, when parents call and have a concern, it's awesome to listen, and I do believe that that is your job. But I hope that when it comes to making a decision on behalf of the board, you will wait until you are at the board table and you will do that as a group. You should address and redirect concerns from the community at the lowest level possible. Oftentimes, when a parent or community member approaches you, it's about an operational issue. Board members are not responsible for operational issues of the board. That is your, your superintendent or your treasurer's responsibility. And oftentimes their concern should be directed at the teacher level, sometimes the principal level. When you refer people up the ladder, I know that you all do a great job of that here in Mentor, referring people appropriately. Refer them to the person that is best suited to helping them. I find that many superintendents don't mind when board members let them know that they've redirected a parent somewhere or referred a parent to some other administrator in the district so that the superintendent can follow up. I do think it's fine for a board member to ask a community member to get back in touch if they haven't been served. I think it's good for board members who are trusted by their community to, to want to make sure people are getting their questions answered and that kind of thing. So although it may not be your job to solve their problem, your job is to refer them and, but I do think it's okay that you say, I, I hope you get the help you need and please let me know in the next ten days if you haven't heard from anybody. Having your own opinion is super valuable. It feeds the discussion at the board table. So one of my favorite things I heard that I stole from a board member years ago is the, I was at a board meeting and the board president made a motion and it was seconded by somebody and then discussion was opened. And a couple of minutes into the discussion, a board member raised his hand and said, you know what, I don't feel real good about this one. I have some questions about this one and the superintendent knows I have some questions about this and we've talked. And I understand that there are some of you here on my board colleagues that disagree with me on this. So I'm just going to open the discussion by saying, change my mind, right? Change my mind. Tell me that I am wrong about my feelings on this. And I loved it because to me, he opened himself up to being convinced, right? He opened himself up to the conversation. Tell me why my thinking about this is not the same as your thinking. That's open-minded conversation. And I think that kind of discussion at the board table is great. So I, I hope that all of you will share your opinions and, and your ideas. And also, when you are discussing, if you can tell yourself to, to mention to your community, I really like this piece of this recommendation. Where I'm having trouble is with this piece, right? Allow your superintendent perhaps to work with his administrators or the treasurer to find the place where all five of you do agree and, and go from there, build up from there.
Cheryl, with that, and I might be skipping ahead a little bit too, what you just said was, to me, stood out. You know, if there is something that, let's say, a couple of us are like, we're okay with all of this, but this is just, you know, we're not, it doesn't sit well with us.
Sure.
But it's at a regular session. Would you say that maybe that conversation should be moved to a work session when we can all talk about it first so that the end result is something that we can collaborate on instead of just voting and voting on it as is?
I think it totally depends on the issue. I think it could depend on the time, timeline involved. There are oftentimes, superintendents don't generally bring stuff to the board that isn't important or doesn't have some sort of a time constraint on it. So I think it totally depends. I think oftentimes, you use a regular meeting every month and then a, a work session type meeting every month. Or you don't.
Just one meeting.
Okay.
Typically.
So typically one meeting. So you do, you do all your business in one massive meeting, right?
Right, typically one?
So, but there are times that boards who operate like you do will set a work session if there's a particularly meaty topic that, that somebody, you all or Craig or Bill think is going to take two hours of discussion. Maybe you don't want to have a six-hour regular board meeting, so you're going to do that at a work session, right?
It's okay.
So yes, the answer to your question is yes, I think you could do that, okay. But the example, here's, here's another example I would give of the piecing out of something. So I had a superintendent, or a board president called me one time and say that they were wanting to renew the superintendent's contract. Loved their superintendent, wanted to renew her contract. But she said, I don't think I'm going to get a 5-0 vote. Is it a problem if I don't have a 5-0 vote? I said, the superintendent's contract is something that I really would hope you could get to a 5-0 on. What's the hangup? And she said, well, our superintendent's been with us four years. She wants a five-year deal and we want to give her a five-year deal. And we have a board member that just doesn't, doesn't want the five-year deal. Does the board member like your superintendent? Yeah, he loves our superintendent, but he doesn't believe in the five-year deal. He thinks it's too much of a risk for the district, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, talk with your board colleagues, talk about, you know, a four-year deal. Can you get your superintendent to agree to stay with you for a four-year deal, whatever it might be? So I always think, especially in those big topics like you're referring to, there's, there's some margin, you know, where we disagree, but hopefully the core of stuff is, is where we all are really agreeing.
So, so you would say if you saw something on the agenda, because, and I know we've talked about too, getting, going forward, maybe next year, changing some of our meetings because the timeframe where we receive information is like Friday at four and then it's the weekend, we have Saturday and Sunday where, you know.
And then Monday's your meeting.
And then Tuesday is the meeting. So we really only have like Monday to, you know, hurry up and get things taken care of. So I, I mean personally, I would like to see that be longer, you know, like a week in advance so that if, before it goes to the public, we could talk about it and say, hey, you know, I'm not okay with this one. Can we, you know, do a work session between this and next month or whatnot, you know? Something like that. Have you seen that process before where board members get it earlier than?
Sure.
A couple of days.
We really, forty-eight hours is probably not uncommon in Ohio. And oftentimes I see board members getting a board packet on Friday before a Monday meeting. Monday seems to be the most popular meeting in Ohio, night in Ohio for board meetings.
For big, big.
And that's short.
Cities?
That, that is short.
Okay.
So, but.
That's crazy.
But especially when we want board members to be able to call the superintendent or the treasurer to answer, to ask questions and to get things answered so that when something with a deadline comes to the board meeting, all of a sudden Craig doesn't find he can't get approval on something because somebody had questions that weren't asked of him. Tasking all of you with all of that work on your weekend kind of stinks, right? But that, that is what happens a lot of times. So if I can, if I can get superintendents and treasurers to work together to expand that, the problem you'll have then is that then oftentimes the final agenda you're looking at is going to have, be somewhat different than the draft that you looked at five days ago, right? So if you're willing to live with the fact that the superintendent says, five days ago, I didn't have these three issues that needed your attention and now I do, then I think, then I think you might be able to widen that just a bit. The other thing is their ability to get everything they need from their captains that goes into that agenda as well. So it's, you know, it's, it's a give and take. But in your case, if, if you could get a draft on, on Thursday or even Friday by noon before your Tuesday meeting, that would be probably good.
Cheryl, one of the variables that is often at play, it's our meeting and essentially our agenda.
Right.
But it's built by our, our two leaders for the district. So especially if there's going to be an item that, you know, somebody wanted to discuss or had a concern about, what's the best process for asking that, that item be inserted into the agenda? Or how would that, how would you best go about that rather than having a substantial topic introduced in the meeting where there isn't that opportunity to do your best preparation? Maybe some research or questions could be asked.
Do you, do you approve your agenda at the beginning of the meeting? You don't formally approve your agenda at the, at the beginning of the meeting. So, most districts do that. They adopt the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, right after they do the pledge and the roll call. What that does is it makes it a lot harder to introduce random stuff from the floor, basically, from the board table into the agenda. It takes a three-fourth vote to do that. If you adopt the agenda at the beginning of the meeting and then it makes it real difficult for Maggie to say, hey, I want to talk about X or I decided I want to bring something else up. But your question about how it's drafted and how things are brought by the board is that practice varies from district to district. Sometimes Tom would call the board president and say, next month I would really like to talk about reviewing these three policies. And she would make sure the superintendent knows that he would like that to be part of the agenda. Sometimes in a district, Tom would just call the superintendent and say, you know, I would like to talk about these. So it varies from district to district what that process is. We want to make sure that issues important to board members that they feel like need to be on the agenda are on the agenda at least once. You know, there are cases where a board member sort of brings something to an agenda, the board says, we're not interested in pursuing that and then the next month, the board member wants it back on the agenda and, and you have that kind of merry-go-round. But, but I think that most board members, if they have something that they believe should be discussed at a board meeting, calling the superintendent and saying, we've got twelve meetings next year. One of the things that's, I really want to talk about at some point in the next, in the first six months is X. How can we make that happen?
And what's the purpose then of the new business portion?
Right.
Because that's where we're.
Not all districts have that.
So maybe something could be adjusted in our agenda so that rather than presenting something as new business, it has another protocol for being introduced into our.
There are, there are some boards that have new business and old business. There are some boards that have something in their, their agenda just called like superintendent recommendations and it has like board business and it's just kind of a random, you know, does anybody have anything for board business? And you never know kind of what is going to come up.
If it's something big, I, I find I can do my most thoughtful, insightful representation as a board member if I have the opportunity to know about it, think about it and prepare for the meeting so that our time is used as, as efficiently and.
I would say if it's an item that is going to eventually come to a board vote or impact a policy or more than one policy or costs money or whatever, I think those are things that should be brought to the superintendent or the board president prior to them being seen, you know, at the meeting. Particularly because they're usually requiring the superintendent and the treasurer to gather data or to bring an expert into the meeting or something else. I've never met a superintendent that wants to be unprepared at a, at a board meeting. So his job is to make sure that, that you're prepared. And so I think to be fair, major agenda items should be percolated, you know, between the board member and the board president or between board members and, and the superintendent and treasurer and then, and then come to the agenda.
So how would, so if I went to the superintendent and talked to them and said, hey, I want to propose this policy at the support of one other person, then they would put it on the agenda or how, how would that, like, and I guess, I wouldn't want to get rid of new business because in, especially in Maggie's situation where it was the safety issue was kind of like very quick, we had to act on it. So you don't want to essentially.
Well, you could still put that under new business. And you could have new business and you could have, you know, A, new policy on whatever it might be or whatever the item is. You could have that.
And in that case.
I'm just suggesting that new business not be an opportunity for board members to play gotcha, right? I don't think new business should be an opportunity for board members to say, hey, let's do this or I hate this or I think we should have a this. I think, I think new business should be an opportu, I think that if there's something any board member wants to talk about, it could be on new business, but it should be previously spoken about so that as all of you have questions, Tom wants to throw something on the agenda and it gets on the agenda. But hopefully all four, the four others of you have had a chance to understand what Tom wants and see some of the data that he's.
How do you come to understanding what Tom wants? If only one does it, the other four. Do I call only one other board member?
I think a practice could be that you, you could do the president and the superintendent to get it on the agenda. So if anybody wants to have something on new agenda, because that way you'd get on, so Friday at two thirty.
Still enough time between Friday.
Well, it's a lot more time than it is Tuesday night at seven forty-five.
Yeah. So there would be, so if, if there were discussions, let's say, between me and Mr. Heath about, let's say, the pronoun survey.
Right.
Policy. So we discussed that and then it didn't get on the agenda, even though I know Tom supported it. So how do we go from us having a conversation to putting it on the agenda?
That's just a practice all five of you need to agree to. Now, I think if.
And I think we have to be specific with it. That goes right to your talk on specificity. I think it would have to be, and this would be true of Maggie's new, new business that you referenced earlier too, like, hey, I want to bring up Craig in. referenced earlier too, like, hey, I want to bring up Craig and Mary, school safety and new business. And then new sa-, school safety would be item A. And then if you wanted to do pronoun survey, or you wanted to talk about the PI levy, or whatever, something that might come from my office, we would then send that to everybody so then it gets on the agenda.
And then would it be under-
Doesn't necessarily address a lot of extra time, but at least people would have the-
So, would it be under-
They'd have the option to on Friday when they got the agenda to seek out clarification, because it would be something that's formally out there.
So, would it be under new business? So, like, in the issue of safety, when I brought the safety issue up, I had talked to Mary about it, and then I had talked to our superintendent about it as well. And, you know, it was kind of like, this is coming down, what do you think? You know, have you talked to our, you know, law enforcement, our local law enforcement? What are their ideas? Will it be on the agenda? It wasn't on the agenda. And, and I said, "Well, I'd like to bring it up in new business." And they said to me, "Bring it up in new business," which I did. But, to your point, it wasn't on the written agenda. So, everybody didn't know because I couldn't talk to everybody.
Exactly.
Because we're not allowed. So, right, so to any point if we have something-
Could I potentially, you know, if you bring something up though, can we put that in a board update and say, hey, you know, as part of what we're looking at?
Why not just put it on the agenda so everybody knows?
But it wouldn't even be better-
You could explain it in an update, a Friday update, on behalf of said person based on the discussion that you had.
Sure, Annie's called me, and she wants to talk about X, so I'm putting it on the, I'm gonna suggest it be on the, on the agenda for next-
Which is what we did for the preferred pronoun piece when we put that on for that first reading in August.
Tom wants to talk to me, he talked to me about home valuations and the impact it has on the budget. He wants to bring it up in new business. And we're gonna put it on the agenda, the effective evaluation increase on revenue.
Now, the only thing I would say that might delay something a board member wants is let's say you want something on the, on the agenda that's gonna take a significant amount of work in order to provide you the information you need to have a cogent conversation. And if that's the case, I would hope that you would trust that your treasurer and your superintendent, if they say, "You know what? I don't have enough time to get that on this month's agenda. It's a great topic. Can we do it in November instead of in October?" And then I would hope that the board member would say, "Yeah, you know, okay." So, I, I don't want board members to be shut down on agenda topics. Now, it could be that once you get to the board table, you're the only, you're the lone eagle out there that thinks chocolate ice cream on Fridays is a fabulous idea. And then you have to take what happens as the will of the board. But I think that topics that are of interest to board members, if possible, should be vetted by the treasurer and superintendent, and there should be some way for them to appear on your agenda.
So, it wouldn't necessarily have to even be a first reading. We could just introduce that topic, and you're saying it would be on the agenda? Like, or would it, because, because if you're talking with the superintendent and legal about verbiage-
Well, let's just say your survey idea.
Yeah.
Right? So, you call Craig, and you say, "It's been a while since we did a community survey. I want to talk about doing a community survey at the board meeting." Great, new, new business, community survey. So, there's no motion there, right?
Okay.
It's just new business. And Mary says, "Okay, the next item on the agenda is foray, community survey. This was brought to us by a board member who thinks it's time for us to do that again. Let's talk."
Okay.
I like that idea because then, rather than the stunned silence, I don't know. Well, what would that look like and who would we use? There would be an opportunity, and maybe especially if you had a topic that was of import to you, or, you know, to whomever, or something that a community member brought forward, that you would share that with either Bill or Craig. Maybe it's three weeks before the board meeting, and that could appear in an update. They're gonna put that on the agenda for the upcoming monthly meeting. But there might even be some links for us to read so that we're better informed. So, in the interest of efficiency and insight, and, and being best prepared to discuss it thoughtfully, we'd be ready.
Sure. That seems so much more productive because right now, it's, it is a little bit. Like, something will come up that we're not prepared for. And then we sit in silence, and people think, "Do they agree? Do they disagree?" I don't even know. I haven't thought about it. I haven't researched it. I, I don't know.
Well, sure, and it would be that- The survey topic, for example, it could be that, you know, the conversation is about, what do we want to get out of a survey? What are the, what are the key areas where we think we, we need to hear from people, or that we think people want to offer their impact? And so, these two then have their marching orders. We need to find somebody, we need to develop a survey, or find somebody that can do a survey that'll get us these things. And maybe, maybe it's a three-month or a six-month initiative. Maybe you don't come to any conclusion at that meeting, but it, it puts it out there and then sets the wheels in motion.
Cheryl, you mentioned a few things about how different places maybe structure their agenda, like the, the new business, or there was another adopting the agenda. If we were to entertain those things, is that something that our administration does? Or do we vote on changing that? Or how, how does that?
I think the way the agenda looks is totally up to you all. Completely and totally up to you all.
So, it's a discussion that the board decides?
Now, you probably have a policy on drafting board agendas, right? So, that's a policy that you'd want to look at.
We do have a policy on that.
But, but the way your agenda looks and the order that it goes in, and where you put public participation, and where you put executive session, and whether or not you adopt your agenda at the beginning of the meeting, all that is, that's, that's up to you.
So, if, if there was somebody who wanted to bring up, you know, public participation and possibly changing that, would that look like that person would put it on the agenda under, let's say, new business, you know, public participation, without it having like an actual policy change ready? It would just be the discussion then?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
But sometimes, we've done it where we've heard from multiple board members, and we've adjusted a policy that we present through a Friday update, and then we present it with a rationale based on that discussion. So, I wouldn't want it to slow us down either at the same time, right? We don't have to, like, go through the formality of changing a policy, and it has to be a new business first, to be introduced as an idea, then to go through a first reading and a second. Now, we're going through even longer, right? Leaving back to like last, last week when you asked-
Who's to say that your conversation can't be started and concluded in, you know, a single conversation? It just, it just depends on the topic.
But if you're, I mean, if you, I think it'd be more from the stance, if it's like a, maybe a one-off or two-off person idea, and maybe you're not feeling a warm reception from Craig or myself, right? Then you would say, "I'd like to get this on new business so that the board as a whole can have that discussion."
Can have that, right?
I mean, I'm trying to read between the lines here. So, like, I think that's when this would be most important. And I think, I can't, I can't speak for Craig. I don't like to be surprised. You know what I mean? I want to be prepared. I want to be able to answer just a question and present something. And that's why I try to do my presentations each month to try to determine where I think questions could be raised prior to it, so that you guys know, and the community knows where we stand with regards to finances.
So, if, so you're saying even if I went to the superintendent and discussed an issue with him, and he said, you know, "I'm not feeling the same way about this. I don't particularly want to move forward with it," then I could still say, "Well, can you put it on the agenda for the board to discuss?"
I think that's, I think that's exactly right.
But I would also hope that he says, "This is why I'm not warmed to it. This is what, these are the issues I think it could, these are the dominos"
Sure.
"that I think it could, that could fall, that I don't want to see fall."
Right.
And you could have that conversation with him. Maybe you can say, "Well, I've already also talked with Mary, and Mary's agreement with me that we should at least bring it to the board." And then, of course, he's heard from you, right? It is the board's meeting. But you have hired him because he's a smart guy about what your district needs. So, it's, it's a give and take.
Okay. But Cheryl, are there exceptions? Like, you know, I'm, if I, if I come up with something that, that Mr. Heath really doesn't like, and he says, "Let me run it past Mary," and she's like, "No, that's, that's not where we want to go because of this and this."
Then I would hope that there's a conversation between Mary and him and you about why it's a bad idea.
Okay.
Right? And, I mean, it could be you're suggesting, you're suggesting something that, that maybe is illegal, or maybe unethical, or maybe violates your contract, or, I mean, who knows? Right? But, but that's the conversation that you need to have. And then I hope that if one, if a board president and a superintendent shares legitimate reasons why, what you want to bring forward to the board table, why this is not the time, I, I would hope you would at least have a conversation with yourself about listening to that.
I think that works both ways as well.
Absolutely.
So-
Absolutely. For sure.
Cheryl, quick question.
Okay.
As far as new business and old business, is there something else that you've seen that's common that other districts use that for?
I think a lot of times, old business is, is sometimes where you have those policies that have already been read once or twice, and now you're gonna approve them. Maybe, maybe it's something that you brought up as new business last month, and now Bill's gonna give an update or something. So, I thi-, I think it just can really vary. But I see old business as being the place for reporting the results of something, or I can't think of any solid examples right now.
So, Cheryl, before we move on to the next slide, what constitutes a meeting?
Anything. Well, I have a slide about that.
Oh, okay. So, I was thinking I might have been jumping.
I have a slide about that. So, I'll, if you can hold it, I'll show it to you.
We hope to get there.
Okay. Voting is anything but 5-0 bad, no, right? There are some big-ticket things I want you to try and get to 5-0 on. So, have the conversations and keep the conversations going until you can maybe get to 5-0. If Jenny is just being obstinate about something, and you just can't convince her, try again, right? But, a levy on the ballot, hiring a key administrator, sometimes hiring a coach, depending on the district, a lot of, there's buying, buying property, closing a building. There are some things in districts that are just big, redistricting. Those are issues where I hope you can really get to a 5-0. What you don't want is a community that says, "Why should we support you? You couldn't even agree," right? But there are many times that you will have a 4-1 or a 3-2, and it will still be a successful initiative. And then your job, to my last point, if you are the one in a 4-1, or one of the two in a 3-2, your job is to be a huge cheerleader for the majority. After that vote is taken, it is dunski, right? It needs to be done. And your job ethically, and when you took the oath of office, is that you will support the will of the majority once that voice has been spoken. Now, that's a lot easier to do if all of you, the one or the two, feel like you've at least been heard, and that the other board members have been diligent about listening to your side of the coin, right? As a board member, I was, I was, I was a one on a 4-1 many times. And I was always able to accept the vote because I felt like I'd been heard, and that I'd had an opportunity to voice my opinion, et cetera. So, that's really important. Okay, we talked a little bit about this, about your CEO and CFO. Those are people that, that you've entrusted your district to. Visiting the buildings, I think this is a great idea. I think board members should have a tour of the buildings once a year. I think any board member that wants to visit buildings because something cool is going on in one of the elementary buildings, and the board member wants to see it, I think all of that is great. But I think there needs to be adequate notice provided. I think the principal needs to serve as a guide. I think it should be brokered by the superintendent. And guess what? You probably have a policy on it. We do. Receiving and giving information. I want information to be equal for all of you. I love the fact that you say you have your board update, assuming that goes to all five at the same time. I want, I want everybody to feel that they have all the same information. The board president should be kind of a sieve for information sometimes. Sometimes the, the CFO or the CEO will call the board president first and say, "Just want you, let you know, I'm sending this to all the board members," but then it needs to go to all the board members, right? Not, not one of you should have information about district business that all five of you haven't been apprised of. And emergency or crisis management. So, this is a, a great question. What does an emergency look like in Mentor? And how will board members learn of problems and outcomes? So, there are a thousand things a day in a district this size that Craig and Bill are taking care of, a thousand. And I'm, I'm not even being facetious. Nine hundred and seventy-five of those, maybe more than that, don't need to rise to the level of board attention. But if Craig has a principal who solves a problem for a parent, who is a neighbor of one of you board members, and you hear from that neighbor about that crisis for that parent, you may wonder why you didn't hear about it, right? Because it was a huge deal to that parent. So, I think having a conversation, it's a great, it's a great meeting topic, agenda topic, to say, "What is the kind of thing that would happen in Mentor where I, as a superintendent, would notify all five of you immediately? You know, what would have to, what would have to happen?" If, in some districts, it's anytime a first responder is called, okay? I would think in a district this size, you have first responders at your buildings every day. Kids fall and sprain their ankle, somebody has a diabetic in, issue, I mean, a teacher faints. I mean, who knows what happens? There's probably things that knock on wood are not huge deals, but still, the ambulance shows up, right? So, I think having a conversation about what would need to happen here in Mentor where you, as a, as a board member, could expect that I or my assistant would notify all of you right away? And then, how are we gonna do that? Is it a text message? Is it an email? Is it a phone call to the board president? And you have a phone chain, whatever that is. I think that board members need to know that they will be apprised when it's a big deal. And sometimes, it's not so big a deal, but it's something that Craig might say, "You know what? I don't think this is a big deal, but my understanding is the news station knows about it, or the radio station knows about it. So, therefore, I want my board members to know as well." Okay, so this is just a little graphic of the chain of command. Participating in agenda discussion and preparation, we've, we've talked about that. This is your forum. And as your board president said at the beginning of this, it's not a public meeting, but a meeting of the board in public, okay? So, these are just some of the golden rules. I often said I'd be out of work if everybody in every district followed the golden rule every day. I would, would not have any consulting to do, ever. Be respectful. You all come from, you all bring different things to the table, and let's try and learn what those strengths are, and be graceful to one another. Differences and disagreements are hurdles, not walls. You can get over anything if you're all willing to do it. Being responsible and accountable, accepting the will of the board. You want people to trust you, be trustworthy, okay?
Cheryl, what do you, accept the will of the board after it has spoken? So, you're saying if it was a 3-2 vote, and something passed, but then, obviously, you voted no on it. You're accepting that the board as a whole voted yes. So, it's, it's gonna, you're not gonna stop, you know, administrative issues. But if I'm asked what I voted on that, or what my feelings are on that, morally and ethically, I feel like I have a right to say what my feelings are on that topic.
I totally agree. And that's what the discussion is for.
Okay.
So, when the motion is made and seconded, and you have the discussion, you're gonna make your feelings pretty darn clear. And it's gonna be fairly apparent, my guess is, to the people at this table, that when the roll is called, you're gonna be a no, okay? So, when somebody comes up to you and says, "That's got a sting that you came out as a two on a 3-2 vote," how do you feel about that? What I would hope you could say, and it's not easy, right? It's not easy, is, "I shared my feelings at the meeting. Our meetings are videotaped, audio-recorded. You can look at the minutes or the videotape, and you can see exactly how I felt about that. The board voted, voted 3-2, and I hope that the way the majority voted is gonna prove to be the right way to have gone." That's what I would say.
So, you'd refer him back to the video?
Sure. Because that's what the discussion is for. And that's your opportunity to say, "I think this is a bad idea." So, that's just my opinion, but that's how I would hope you could go. Be responsive and consistent. If somebody texts you, try and text back. Try and treat each other as, as important individuals in terms of your board relationship. Be consistent. Answer your emails, all that kind of thing. And keep confidence as always. If you have a one-on-one conversation with one of your board colleagues or your administrator, If you have a one-on-one conversation with one of your board colleagues or your administrator, finish that conversation by asking, "Is this a confidential conversation? Is this just something you wanted to bounce off me? Or is this something our board colleagues should know about?" Maybe Maggie, maybe you and Jenny have a conversation. At the end of that conversation, Jenny, you say, "You know what? I think this is something that we should bounce off Annie and Mary and Tom. I think everybody should know about this." And maybe you say, "You know, I'm not quite ready there. Can you hold it?" Just be explicit about your expectations for conversations. Confidence is always, an executive session should be kept. And stay committed. This is muddy work. Public education is muddy work, and I hope you all can stay committed. Okay. Board president should encourage full board interaction in meetings. So I like it when a board president says, "Tom, you haven't said much tonight. Do you have, what's your take on this?" Right? So if she calls you out, be ready. I think it's great for the community to hear from everybody. The board president should be somewhat comfortable with parliamentary procedure. We don't expect you to be an expert. Usually, your treasurer is your expert. And sometimes superintendents are really good at parliamentary procedure, but usually when a board president says, "Oh, my gosh, where are we are in this amendment to the motion, blah, blah, blah," usually the treasurer can straighten you out. The board president should encourage frequent communication among the leadership team. So I hope whatever works for you in Mentor, you will find ways to do that. Board direction leads to exemplary superintendent and treasurer action and follow-through. As a board member, ask things like, "When are we gonna see?" Where if I, Annie, if you say, "If I vote yes on this tonight, when am I gonna see results? How long is it gonna be before you'll feel confident this is working? And if it's not working, what's plan B?" Those are great questions to ask. Board trusts the administration to manage all day-to-day operations, doesn't second-guess and supports all staff publicly. Administration keeps board consistently informed and aware of key decisions in progress. By the way, I will email you this, so you can share.
Thank you.
We talked a lot about this, what is Mentor's practice in drafting? I think we covered that. Do board presidents and superintendents discuss draft via phone or in person before it goes to the board? I like that as a practice. It is the board's agenda, so whether it's a phone call or an email with the board president, I think that's a good practice. Does the board president receive potential agenda items? We talked about that. How far ahead of the board meeting does the full board see the agenda? You all saw this presentation ahead of time, apparently. Does the district post the draft agenda on its website for community members? Do you do that? Okay, that is not a law, right? You don't have to post your agenda ahead of time. You do have to post a notice of your meeting. Most districts do post their agenda, and I think it's helpful for community members that might decide to show up at your meeting, but it's not required. And does Mentor formally approve the agenda at the beginning of the actual meeting? I like that as a practice, because I think it makes the meeting go smoother. But you don't have to do that, and some districts don't.
If we decided to add that, is that just a choice we can make and begin to do that?
Tom's question. What's a meeting? Any pre-arranged discussion of the public business of a public body by a majority of the public body's members, right? So this is a meeting. So basically, anytime three of you are together, for sure. And if you have a pre-arranged discussion, "Let's meet at Cracker Barrel for lunch next Wednesday to talk about the renewing of a contract, or to talk about negotiations, whatever." You can't do that, right? So what I wanna tell you here is to be careful about perception as well. The three of you could be, three of you could be having lunch at Cracker Barrel and talking about the Cleveland Indians, right? But if three of you are seen at Cracker Barrel having a tet-a-tet, somebody's gonna think you're talking about school district business. So always be aware of perception. If you attend your Education Foundation fundraiser, or the mayor's fundraiser, or something like that, and all five of you want to attend, awesome. Don't sit together. It's pretty easy, right? So even if you're not talking about district business, just don't give the perception that you could be. That's the smartest thing to do. And then, doesn't matter what you call it, whether it's a meeting, a pre-meeting, a retreat, a work session, all that kind of stuff, they are all meetings. The only big difference is whether they are scheduled in January at the organizational meeting and already on the calendar, and whether or not you decide in May that you need to have some meeting in June to discuss, you know, the fact that the plumbing isn't working right in one of your buildings, whatever it might be. That's a special meeting. If it's not set in January, it's called a special meeting, right? The only difference, then, is an emergency meeting, which needs to be a true emergency. You don't schedule an emergency meeting unless it really is an emergency. I'm guessing in Florida, in the next couple days, there's gonna be lots of emergency meetings among school boards. Any questions about what is a meeting?
The last line. May include discussions or email.
Yep.
Other electronic communications. Who's gonna cover that, right?
Yes. So when you're emailing, make it a habit to not reply all, okay? Just don't reply all. Your superintendent may send an email out to all five of you and to your CFO, and that's awesome. It may just be informational and just, you don't need to respond at all. Or if you do need to respond, respond just to him. "Got it, thanks." Or, "I have a question about this. Could you call me?" Do that. But as soon as Jenny says, "I have a question about this," and Tom says, "I had that same question," you're getting in nasty water, okay?
I have a question. What if one board member calls another board member about something that's on the agenda? They talk about it. Then a third board member gets called and calls that first board member. Now they talk about it.
Right.
Then the two that already had, that didn't call each other yet, had a discussion.
Right.
So now you have four board members talking about board business, and isn't that considered an open meeting?
That's a round-robin meeting, and that's been ruled as not okay. But a lot of it depends on the content of that discussion. Now, you could call Mary, and you could say, "I wanted to talk to you about A." And you all could have a conversation, right? The point is, what you shouldn't do to Mary is say, "When that comes up on the agenda, how are you gonna vote?" Right? You just have a conversation about it, and you can tell by what Mary shares with you how she feels about it. Now, Mary may then call Tom, and she may well say, she could say, "Tom, let's talk about A." Now, what she shouldn't say is, "I already talked with Annie, and Annie feels like this." That's when you start to get into that round-robin stuff. It's quite possible that you will have a conversation about A with more than one board member, but you don't ask a board member how they're gonna vote, or what their particular take. You just sort of have a conversation, okay? And you shouldn't do that. "I'm gonna call Mary," and then Mary will call Tom, or, "I'm gonna call Mary, and then I'm gonna call Jenny and say I talked to Mary." That's when you get in trouble.
And then, if there was, on top of that, if there was a meeting, and then afterwards, an executive session, and then there was a motion to go back into an open session, is that allowed? Is that something best practice? Should we not do that?
You shouldn't be voting in executive session.
So I'm not saying it's voting. I'm saying if there was, so I'll just say it, just out of transparency. So in April, when we had the discussion, or there was no discussion, something was removed and was tabled, and then we went into executive session. Then we stopped executive session at the end and went back into open session to discuss something that I feel like a lot of people would have wanted to hear, because it was a hot-button issue of the night.
Right.
So that wasn't notified to the public, that we were gonna go back into open session when nobody was there, and have this hour-and-a-half-long conversation about, you know, books being in the classroom and boardsmanship and all this other stuff. So is best practice, is moving forward, that we shouldn't just go back into open session?
I think when you go into executive session, it should be a practice that you notify your community whether or not you will be returning to public session for more discussion or not.
That's fair.
Okay? Most districts have executive session at the end of the evening, and they tell their community, "We will not be coming back, and there will be no further voting," right? But sometimes, if you need to go into executive session in the middle of a meeting, you can do that, but I think it's good to say to your public, "We will return, and we estimate that return to be in 20 minutes or 40 minutes." Okay? And I've seen some districts that go into executive session in the middle of the meeting, and that what they thought was a 10-minute thing is a 30-minute thing, and somebody will be sent back out to the public to say, "Sorry, but it's probably gonna be another 10 minutes," or whatever.
So Cheryl, because that situation did happen to us. If we went into executive session, in good faith, that we weren't coming back out.
Right.
We weren't going back into, and then we're in executive session, and it becomes apparent that we need to discuss things and get back into open session, should we, is it illegal to go back?
No, it's not illegal to go back. And you are videotaping your meetings, right?
No, not that meeting.
Okay.
Only the regular session. So the second open session, that we went back and talked for an hour and a half about things, was not taped.
Okay. So it sounds to me like you've sort of cleared that up for future, which is probably an important thing to have done.
It's not something we wanna do, but it just...
I would say you could do it the way you did it, but knowing that it was an issue that people in your community might want to have heard, maybe you would have taken a tack, kind of like we did a week ago, which is, "Let's adjourn, bring it back the next meeting."
Yeah, 'cause all we had were minutes, you know?
Right.
Did we get minutes of that section?
Yes.
Better believe we did.
You don't take minutes in executive session, but you do take minutes in anything that's open session, right? So executive session, these are the rules to use executive session. Small print, but basically, the personnel exemption is there. Need to be specific about what you're doing. You don't say employment dismissal, promotion, you know, whatever. You shouldn't put the whole thing in there. You should say, "We're going into executive session to discuss the hiring of a staff Purchase of property, pending or imminent court action negotiation, matters required to be confidential, or security or emergency planning." So I had a board member once that told me, "I got elected on a platform of never going into executive session. I think we should be 100% transparent." I said, "Get ready for lots of lawsuits," right? There is a reason that we have an executive session exemption in Ohio, but it is also really tight and really small. So these are issues that are important in terms of protecting the confidentiality of students and staff, and your budget, and some of the things that you're spending money on, et cetera. And so use it expeditiously, or excuse me, use it carefully and faithfully, right? But use it when you can or when you need to. Executive session, in some districts, it takes place every meeting. In a district like yours, where you're meeting once a month, I would say, most often, you're probably gonna have an executive session. Most often, it happens at the end of the meeting, because you don't wanna keep your community hanging around. But it doesn't have to. Make sure, again, that you state the agenda. If you invite guests into your executive session, that often happens, because you often need to hear from a lawyer, or a principal, or somebody that's an expert in the topic that you're gonna be discussing. I like it when a superintendent informs all five board members ahead of time that there's gonna be a guest. Have the guest do their thing. Each of you ask the guest whatever questions you might have about what they shared with you, and then thank them for their time, and they leave before you all discuss, okay?
Cheryl, at the OSBA 101, I remember, and I don't know if I remember this 100% correctly, but there was a section that you talked about where if somebody comes to the microphone at the open, you know, session.
Public participation, yeah.
Yes. And let's say they start to name specific teachers, or staff, or their son, or daughter, or X, Y, and Z. Are we to say, "Hey, you know, we can meet in executive session over this," or how do you handle that kind of situation? 'Cause I remember there being something on it, but...
Most often, depending on what is said by the person. Usually, a board president can step in and say, "We don't discuss individual staff members or students in public participation." And sometimes, there's an immediate adjournment to executive session. Sometimes, that person is referred to the superintendent for, you know, private session, whatever needs. But yeah, especially, we don't want students violating FERPA rights by talking about students in public participation.
So in that situation, then, if we went into, like, would we ask that person who spoke to come into executive session? How does that work?
Well, again, the board, you all have the right to decide whether you wanna hear this issue.
Gotcha, okay.
Right? So Mary, as your board president this year, would probably confer with your superintendent and your treasurer and decide whether or not this is, is this something the five of us need to hear about, or is it something that the superintendent should talk to this person?
Like, right then, during the...
Members of the public do have a right, even if they want to, if they are the parent of the student, you know, they could share in public participation if they want to. But they should be invited to do it in executive session.
Okay.
If they would like.
Thanks.
So we talked about guests. Cell phones, there have been cases, and lawsuits filed and won by boards against particular board members who recorded executive session, either video recording or audio recording of executive session. You can't, you shouldn't do that. Can't do that. So many boards make, you know, a sort of a visible acknowledgement, and put their phones in a basket, or whatever, inside the executive session room. So do whatever you have to do, so that everybody, and Tom, who's, I know, your biggest cynic, feels really comfortable that you are respecting the laws of executive session, right? Confidentiality and trust. You all need, that is the one place where you can all go as individuals and share your honest opinion about one of these six areas that can be discussed. Whether it's about firing a teacher, hiring a teacher, disciplining a bus driver, whatever it is, you all need to be able to share your personal feelings about that, and then come back to the board table as a group with your decision, and not have anybody know which one of you voted for X versus Y. And actually, you don't vote in executive session, but which one of you was kind of the soft touch versus the hard case, right?
Now, only those things are supposed to be discussed in executive session. If the discussion gets down the road, and now we're not talking about these things, what's the best course of action?
You need to police each other.
Okay.
Somebody needs to say, "Hey, we did not say that we were gonna talk about that." Even if it's okay, then you come back into public session and you say, "We need to go into executive session to talk about negotiation. That wasn't on our previously stated agenda." Then you go back into executive session, you can talk about negotiation. But you can't tack a second topic onto something else. All right. In the home stretch now, abstaining and voting, no. The goal for the superintendent and treasurer for every recommendation. I was doing a workshop last summer, and a treasurer said a really cool thing to me. She said, "We never bring anything to the board that we don't expect a 5-0 vote on." And I thought, "Oh, that's pretty cocky," right? But what she was saying to me was, "Everything we bring to the board, we expect a 5-0, because we put on ourselves the intention that we are gonna provide the board everything they need to vote yes on this recommendation." And they hope that everything goes 5-0. But hopefully, it's because they've done their homework, you all have done your homework, et cetera. The ethical versus the legal obligation to abstain, I don't think anybody, any board member should abstain on any issue ever, unless they are legally or ethically obligated to do so, right? There are times that you're legally and ethically obligated to abstain, or the perception is just such that even if you're not legally obligated to abstain, you just feel compelled. And then, the one of that is, you know, the board member that they're voting to hire the board member's cousin, right? By law, the cousin is far enough away that the board member could vote to hire that person, but you just feel ishy about it, so you abstain. But you should not abstain because it's a hard issue. You don't abstain because it's a hard thing. You were elected to vote on the hard things. Don't abstain when it's time to bring, you know, put a levy on the ballot, right? That kind of stuff. And then, voting no the responsible way. Board members will call me and say, "Cheryl, my board president told me I had to say why I was voting no on this." And I don't think I have to. No, you don't have to. You don't have to say why you're voting no. But I'm hoping that in the course of the discussion, Maggie, if you're gonna be a no on something, I'm hoping that in the course of the discussion, you're sharing your thoughts, and it's pretty darn clear to Mary and Tom and Jenny and Annie that you're not feeling so hot about this, right? So your reason, you don't have to come right out and say, "I plan on voting no on this." But when you say, "These are my challenges. These are my issues." Try and convince me. And you have that discussion, maybe you're convinced, maybe you're not convinced, but that is the responsible way to vote no. Okay. The board's meeting held in public, we talked about that. Understanding your district's policy about public participation. You may change your public participation policy. You have 500 people pack in your room. They all wanna talk about the new librarian, which never happens, but they all do. And so you alter your policy, and your board president says, "It looks like we've got 50 people here that wanna talk about the new librarian position, so we're going to suspend our current policy of allowing only 10 people to speak, or 10 minutes, or whatever is your policy for tonight's agenda." You can do that. The public does not have a right to participate at your meetings. It's not a law that you have public participation. And the fact that you do it means that you want to hear from your community, and that's a good thing. Put public participation where it works. If the second item on your agenda is hiring the new principal, and you have a lot of people that wanna talk about that, have two public participation sessions.[1788.12] And say, "We're going to have a 10-minute session just on the principal hire, and then we're going to have our regular public participation towards the end of the meeting." Board president, just as you did tonight, you read that statement. I like a statement at the beginning of public participation that refreshes everybody on the rules and on your practices and processes. Oftentimes, a board president will say something like, "Many times, the board does not respond. The reason we don't respond is because we, as a group of five, have not had an opportunity to discuss whatever it is you're bringing to us." There is a difference between being disagreeable and being disruptive. Disagreement is okay. Disruption is, is not okay. And as we found out last week, using recess and adjournment, when you're not clear that, that moving forward is your best course of action is certainly a good way to go. So, board meeting takeaways. What three things? So after you have that great discussion over the, the point that Maggie raised, it, it would be awesome if I heard at every board meeting a superintendent say, or a board president, or a board member say, "You know what? This has been great discussion. Superintendent Heath, if each of the five of us was going to take two things back to the community this month, what two things would you want us all to share? What are the two things that all five of us can be on the same page about going forward?" That, that's a great way to conclude a discussion. And then, just as we talked about, these are, these are great questions, governance questions that boards should, should and could ask. And I think my last slide is this one. Social media, it is a bugaboo, to use my grandmother's word. Remember that perception is reality to your school audiences. If you choose to use your personal social media to talk about district business, the law will see that as a blurring, right? So your personal social media should be about your dog, your cat, your kids, your visit to Florida, whatever it was. Again, just my opinion, I don't think board members should use their social media to talk about district business, but should refer anybody on your Facebook page, or your Instagram page, or your TikTok page to the district's official sources of social media. Don't post copyrighted material, or certainly student images. There, we had a suit a couple of years ago from a board member who innocently posted a picture of some students on her Facebook page, and she got sued by those students' parents, right? So you probably have a policy about the use of student images. Make sure you're following your policy.
And did that photographer lose the case?
The parent, yes.
The parent?
Yes, yeah.
Posted it?
Yeah. Remember that claims of defamation, discrimination, harassment, and/or copyright violation can all be made for online content. Be aware of public records and open meetings laws. Again, open meetings. Tom, you're a big Facebooker, right?
All right.
So you post, you post something, you post something about, "Boy, it was a great football game. So glad to see how well we did, how well we played, blah, blah, blah." And then Jenny chimes in, and she goes, "We'd have done a lot better if we had a better coach," okay? And then Mary jumps in and says, "I agree with Jenny. I, I think we would do about better if we had a better co-" Whatever. Now you're having a meeting, right? You're talking about district business, and there's three of you having that conversation. So that, there could be a case made about a violation there. So be very careful.
That could flow on other topics besides that.
Sure, well...
Anything that the three come together.
If it's district business.
Even one or more.
Yes, yes.
If it's three coming together.
Now, two of you could have a Facebook back and forth, but whether, whether you want to do that is a whole nother conversation.
Now Cheryl, I have a question. What if, on like, one of the community groups that are on Facebook, there's people saying X, Y, and Z is going on in our school?
Right.
And then a board member gets on there and says, "This isn't really happening, but it sure could be happening," you know, like, that, we should probably refrain from commenting on those kind of things.
I, I wouldn't do that.
Okay.
I wouldn't do that. I know it's tempting. I know how much it is that you want to tell people. The story you think you have is not the full story. I know you want to do that. Maybe you address it at a board meeting.
Right, that would make sense.
But the other thing, the other thing you could do is, you know, one thing, I wouldn't argue with a board member who just said, you know, found the link for that topic on the district's webpage and just pasted that link in there. Lines between the public and private life are blurred, right? You're all public, public figures now, and you need to just keep your social media that's personal, make it personal.
Cheryl, if it's not a pers, if it's a personal page, but you're using it for board business, I, because I was told that if you use, like, I don't have a campaign page right now, and I don't use my personal page for board business.
Right.
But I was told that you can't remove comments or block people. If you're using your campaign page as board-related, you cannot censor and pick, you know, who you want on there.
I don't, I'm not an attorney. I don't know the full answers to that question. But I know that some districts disable the comment page, or disable the comment feature. I don't know, I guess pros and cons to that, too. But I would talk to your legal counsel, but I think a lot of board members keep their campaign, like your, what do I want to say, the name, what is it? The URL, right? You keep your URL for your next campaign, but they don't use it in between elections. And your conduct impacts your district, right? If you're snarky and mean, and you poke fun at people, whether it's personal, or whether it's school-related, people are going to assume that's the way you are as a board member. So, taking the high road is never a bad idea. That's it. What didn't we talk about that we should? Any questions?
Cheryl, question regarding work sessions. I know different districts have different ways that they use them. In the past, we really haven't had very many in a year. Can you talk about that a little bit, how they're utilized?
So a lot of districts schedule work sessions at, in January at the organizational meeting. And so they would schedule their formal meeting on the second Monday, and their work session on the fourth Monday, or their work session on the second Monday, and their formal meeting on the fourth Monday, whatever. By law, they're regular meetings. They're regular meetings. Whether you treat one informally and one formally is totally up to you. The districts that use the work session format often use it to just have that discussion. Usually, at work sessions, there is no public participation unless the board wants it. Maybe you want it for this meeting. You'd like the community's opinion about the new bleachers for the basketball arena. But you have a work session, and you, and it's just discussion usually about one or two topics, so that when you get to your formal meeting, you don't have a six-hour meeting. Now, the disadvantage to that is you may have community members come to your formal meeting, and they weren't part of the work session, and so the motion is made and seconded, and you call for discussion, and there's relatively little because you talked about it two weeks ago, and you pass it, and community members are like, "Hey, what the heck happened?" right? So it would just be retraining your community about the fact that you're, you're doing that. So a lot of districts like that format, but many districts still stick with the, "If we're going to discuss it, we're going to discuss it at the formal meeting, and then we just try and have formal meetings that, that aren't six hours long." But if it's, if it's scheduled in January, and it's put on the calendar in January, it's a regular meeting, even if you're going to call it a work session. And then your January organizational meeting serves as notice for those meetings, right? So you don't have to renotice. Any other questions?
So what happens when, like, you have boards that don't work like that? You, you're not cohesive. You don't have trust or communication.
I think that your only, your only option is to work to rebuild it. I think you all got elected because you want to do what's best for the students. There was an article in the Marion newspaper this week written by somebody that's taking shots at the Marion Board and the Marion City Council because they're all acting like children, right? It's a great, it's a great little piece, if any of you want to try and find it. But you're the example. You are, are the example. And if, if you all can't talk about the things that are most important in this district, which is student achievement, the safety of your staff and students, whatever, your four goals, then what, what are you doing, right? So again, I think having that difference of opinion is important. You have different community members in this community that have different philosophies, and you want to represent the philosophies of those people, great. But you've got to trust each other that once you have that discussion, discussion, and you close that discussion and make a decision, that all five of you are going to be willing to move forward. Now, I think some of the practices and processes and policies and all that stuff that you can kind of clean up, so that you can reassure each of the five of you that, that your, your thoughts will be presented and will be heard, and that things aren't falling through the cracks, I think that will help as well. But frankly, districts that, where you have five board members that, that can't get along and can't move forward, you're risking a lot more than, you know, hard feelings. Thanks for letting me be here, and I hope you'll reach out if there's ever anything I can do for you.
Thanks for coming up at such a good time.
You're welcome.
That's very, very nicely done.
And I will send you the presentation and you the presentation. You can, Cheryl. So thanks so much for having me. Check in on the time.
Yeah, I know we're right at the eight o'clock hour, and, yeah, I kind of anticipated we might get through the, the board relations piece and, and the procedures. Really, ju, very quickly, from the board policy standpoint, just to let the, the board know. Cheryl, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, safe travels, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Yeah, we're, we're going to look into what this process might be, if, if that's still okay with everybody on the board, of looking at more of an overhaul of the entire board policy manual. And, and hopefully give you guys some updates here over the next, should be fairly quick, over the next week or two. Again, if, if we're looking for that, that comprehensive review of all of our board policies, I, I think, you know, that six-to-12-month timeline is, is probably something that's doable here this year for us. Obviously, that would be one of the things on my goals that we'll talk about in executive session on, in October. But we, we at least wanted to make sure that, that we were in somewhat of an agreement of, of really looking at that full process, as opposed to a bunch of individual ones. And we know we will still have some of those conversations as we go throughout the year here. But, you know, looking at this bigger project overall, I think is, is probably an important thing for us moving forward, if, if everybody's agreement.
It almost seems like a spreadsheet where you have formulas here that add this and that, so that there are checks on the total, and that's where it makes sense to me, especially since that's, to my knowledge, this has not been done. That we've had this cobbled, you know, set of policies. And, and there's not necessarily wrong, anything wrong with any of those specifically, but whether they address things in a cohesive way, so there aren't gaps and issues, that it's probably better. And can they, just like when you, you trained, translated payroll over to a new system, is there a way to migrate what was to what is?
There is, yeah. So like, we talked to Neola today, and they talked about a crosswalk between current policies and their policies. And, you know, that's what Neola does. They, they write policy. And they help many districts across the state, as long as, as well as OSBI. They're the two prominent ones. Those are the two main ones we're looking at. We're going to look at their processes and see who has the support. And, you know, we both worked with Neola. Craig, you've worked with OSBA as well.
Yeah, we had OSBA policies in Hilliard. In both Dublin and Delaware, it was Neola.
So going, having gone through that, policies, you know, I think an overhaul is necessary to, whether we stick with who we have when we do an overhaul, or we go to somebody else and do an overhaul, to make sure that things are up to date, because if you don't regularly update your policies, it's like, it's, it's, it's like hygiene, right? Like, if you don't do it, it goes bad quickly. So, and it's no one in person's fault, but like, it has to be, I could speak from experience when I sat in a similar seat. You know, when I wore all the hats in Kirtland as a superintendent, that fell on me. So every August and January, we got policy updates, and you would have to spend a substantial amount of time going through current policy, policies that you have, updating that, getting that to the board so that they had ample time to, you know, we had a, we had a procedure for us in Kirtland that worked. We'd have to develop that same type of process here at Mentor. There'd be policies that Craig would have to update with him and his team, and there'd be policies that I would be responsible for updating because they fell in my purview, right? And then we would have to, to do the, to go through that on a regular basis. But we got to get to a point, I think, where we both have agreed that we have a set of policies that we feel are a good starting point basis, that are up to date, ready to go.
It makes so much sense, rather than just trying to, because what we have is maybe some very well-written policies that are exactly what we want to use, but because it was never put together in a coordinated way, it, you know, this was updated, it's just like anything else, none, it, it doesn't fit. That's what I meant before.
Well, yeah, but what, what worked for Dr. Hoynes 10 years ago, like, may not work for us now because of things that just weren't updated, or that times have changed, like, things change, right?
I'm glad we're having the conversation, because there, I have concerns, I mean, not over all of the policies, but there are some that I don't know that they're, I believe that there's a conflict with current law and current revised code in the policy, so I think it's important to look at all of it. So, because you have both been here, and, and those of you that have been on the board a lot longer than we have, is this something, you know, you're talking about a long-term, and then, and then really, it's not just a long, it's not just a six-to-12-month overhaul, but it would be an ongoing as things come up?
Yeah, policy never, that work, to just be clear to the board, that work never stops.
That work never stops.
Neola, Neola sends you updates annually, twice, and then there's intermediate updates that happen as needed.
So, and it seems like we may be a little behind on those, those things now. So is it something that we would be looking at, maybe making a policy committee? Or, and, and who typically sits on those types of things? Is it board members? Is it more than board members? Because, you know, just, I think it's just something that we need to, to have a discussion on.
And based on our conversation today, and hopefully we'll have that follow-up conversation with OSBA policies as well, when we talk to them on Monday. They said it's, it's up to the district to decide how they want to do that, but they give us some recommendations as far as, you know, who might be involved in some of those things.
Yeah, it kind of depends on what the board wants, too, right? I mean, I think, you know, that comes into play, where I said in Kirtland, the reason why it took us six months to do our August updates were because our board specifically only wanted a handful of policies to review. You know, we would, as long as we get 15. And, and first-year superintendent gave 15, and it went through, did them all. I was all proud of myself, did 15 board, you know, policy updates, put them on the board agenda. They're like, "What's wrong with you? We can't go, we can't go through all these policies? You know, this is like dry reading. I have four lawyers on my, you know, on my board at the time." So even they didn't want to go through it. So I think it kind of goes to, so we kind of came up with a protocol, "Hey, no more than five." So, you know, we would do a couple each month, and by the time we'd get through whatever ones that we had, then the January update comes through, right? So then you start the entire process over and kind of do it that way. But I did all of that with my administrative team. There, the board involvement was that we would get them the policies in advance for first reading, second reading. There was not a committee.
So this would be part of the value in contracting a group that would help us kind of organize this? Is that my understanding? Am I assuming too much?
For the overhaul, yes, correct. In a, in a group that we know, we feel comfortable is going to provide the, the regular updates and the guidance and have the frameworks in place, like, Neola's strength is, that's what they do. They have the ORC, and they have the legal piece built into their policies. So that...
Is that a yearly fee with updates, or do you get so many years with the overhaul?
It's a yearly fee. And we, we pay a yearly fee now for OSBA's policies, or, excuse me.
Pebble Wagner.
Pebble Wagner. And with, and we'd have a yearly fee with OSBA as well.
There's some advantage. If you have already worked successfully, both of you, with Neola, I'm, you know, maybe OSBA will offer a comparable product. But I would say, unless you're convinced that the OSBA would be significantly different or better, that using one that you know has been effective for support for the, the people who are on the front line of implementation, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I'm biased, truly, but OSBA can convince me.
Yeah, there you go.
Because they so choose.
I think it's riots in the parking lot, remember? But, no, I mean, there, and which, do you know which of the two services is dominant, let's say, in northeastern Ohio?
That I don't, I would assume it's Neola, but I don't have any.
They could tell you, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, who are your customers.
Yeah.
Is it possible to get both, and that way we can look over some of the things?
Well, you can, we can give you districts that you can go on and look right now and compare the two that's, that have Neola and OSBA. and compare the two, that's, that have Neola and OSBA policies. I mean, I know, for example, like, if you go to Kirtland's website, they have Neola. Go to their Board Docs, and you could see examples of their, of their policies.
So policies are somewhat specific to, like, you, as a district, can, can change things if you didn't?
Correct.
Yeah. Dublin and Hilliard are probably the two easiest. Hilliard's been OSBA for a while, and Dublin's Neola.
Yeah, Shippensburg Falls was OSBA, but they're switching to, you know, Neola. So I don't know where they're at.
And Chardon's Neola.
And Chardon just, just shifted to Neola, I believe, too.
Is there a yelp for policies?
So you said Dublin was?
Dublin's Neola, Hilliard's OSBA.
Is the cost the same?
We won't know until we talk to OSBA.
Yeah.
Interesting topic. Mary certainly remembers when we got on the Board, we had a book. It was that big, and it got bigger. And we would get a copy, printed copy with holes punched, what pages to take out of our book, and replace it, or add new ones, and where to put them. So we had a hard copy book.
Sleeping forests.
It went, what, on Board Docs?
Yeah.
So. We no longer had to do that, so it was like, woo-hoo.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, trust, but did we verify? Yet, I don't know, but we trusted, and we voted on every policy that was changed.
Yeah, and those are done.
They all came to us, just like you do.
I can assure you, the policies in in the the years that I've been back, both as a Business Operations and CFO, because we still have to maintain in our respective offices that hard copy that we still do that with, even though, just so that we have that hard copy.
Oh, so we don't have the hard copy, you do, that's good, but we have it online.
But we, but we.
But we have outdated.
I can tell you the number of times that I've looked at the hard copy, other than put, having my administrative assistant put the new policies in it, is this, because I go to Board Docs, just like you.
Because it's indexed.
Yeah. And it's easier to search. I can do a control, I can do a control, you know.
So what we have are outdated ones that should have been exhumed or sort, not exhumed, yeah.
And that's, and that's probably true of most districts, and I can speak from experience that the Superintendent I replaced said, hey, I fell behind on policy, you're gonna want, and he left me, left me a thing, and said, you know, it was kind of the running joke that him and I still have, is, you know, thank you for that, that you, you know, you gotta catch up. But if you, we don't, I think, to the fact that we're both new, and we keep finding things, and we've been having this mantra with Bill Porter and I, and now Craig, it is probably worth.
But we need to do it.
To do it.
Yeah.
So do we set up, like, a work session for the follow-up after this, or what's the next step?
And we talked a little bit about that today, I'm, because obviously, we've got a, we don't have another work session scheduled till the end of October. But we've got our October Board Meeting, so we can, again, we kind of want to get started as soon as possible if this is something that we're truly wanting to do. So my hope is at our October Board Meeting, we'd be able to, you know, at least have some conversation and maybe a recommendation to, you know, which direction we might want ahead.
Maybe we could have, at that meeting, a presentation.
A presentation from, from the group, or, if we want to have both do presentations, we could certainly do that as well.
If you recall, when we met, I want to say, maybe it was, when we tweaked our public participation policy within February or March, I'd have to look back, so in March. And one of the things that we thought at the time was, because we were making a change, and things seemed contentious in at some of our meetings, that we made modest changes. If we, in the interest of good governance, limited the total length of public participation, I remember you agreeing at the time that that made sense.
I don't know if I agreed on that. I I certainly don't agree with limiting public participation.
Not limiting, but the total length.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that.
I, I'm, I'm mistaken then, because it was my understanding that you thought that there, it made some sense because, well.
I mean, I understand the the concept behind it, I get that, but I just, I think people have a right to speak, whether, whether they're saying something nice or not. I think every person who wants to come and speak should be able to do it.
If we had a limit, whatever that might be, in the total length of public participation, we could devote more time to addressing those issues, whether it's discussing the intricacies of policy, or other things that the Board needs to address, because some of the public participation is redundant.
But I think, and this is just my personal opinion, instead of limiting public participation, we should get down to the root cause of why people on all sides are coming and speaking up, and try to fix that, because then essentially that would fix, you know, the long public participation. But also, who do you, I mean, if thirty people are there that want to speak up, and you're limiting it to thirty minutes, who do you decide, oh, this person can speak, but this one can't? I think that's, I would never want to do that. I think people have a right to come and speak. It's the only time that they can address the whole Board, you know, face-to-face. And I know personally, I emailed in when I was not on the Board for a very long time, and that was my chance to speak to the Board as a whole, because I didn't get emails back. So I would never want to reduce public participation. I would like to fix the issues of why everybody is coming and speaking up, so that public participation then essentially also drops. That's my two cents. So, I don't know, if anybody else feels a certain way?
Because if we have additional, let's say, work sessions, once a month, twice a month, once a week, whatever, that has, you know, that would be our only opportunity to get some of this additional work done. And in the interest of consideration for the job that we expect our CFO to do and our CEO to do, their time is valuable as well. So, I mean, I don't know what what the solution is. I don't know that there's an easy answer. But some of our public participation sections have gone on for a couple of hours, far longer than the meeting was. And so in, in lieu of that time being spent, especially if it's the same issue that has already been voted on and is off the agenda, I don't know. I don't know that that's the best use of the public's time, our time, in order to serve the needs of the district in the best way possible.
Yeah, I can't see limiting speech.
You wouldn't want to limit it?
No, I wouldn't. I don't think, limiting speech, yeah, three minutes is fine, but not to get down to, we only have a half hour, thirty minutes. Boom, no. There's too many people want to speak, and to limit who speaks, yeah, who gets in line first, the the ones who don't get in line, sorry, wait till next one. I have no problem with, if we stay at ten o'clock. I sit and I write notes, even though I know I can watch the video when it's posted.
I've got notes too, from those, all those meetings.
I number the people. I don't get the names always right. But I make the notes.
What do other districts do?
I haven't been in a district that doesn't have a cap. Everything's been capped at thirty minutes.
Do you know, Phil, the districts that you're aware of?
I can think of maybe two meetings in four years I had summer shoulder in Kirtland, so.
Yeah. I know Chardon has recently changed their policy. I was just talking to administrators in Chardon about how they are organizing their meetings. They, I believe, have, they have a cap, but they also limit who can speak. And I, it's, I know I'm going to mess this up, so, but it's something like, anyone that lives in the district, anyone that has, if they don't live in the district, but their child is in the district, because it's an open enrollment school, anyone that owns a business in the district, or is an elected official in the district, like, in that area, can speak. And I hope I'm not, I hope I'm not forgetting any.
Maybe we could find out.
It's been working in the district, maybe? Yeah, because you wouldn't want to, I know we had a discussion before about limiting public participation, and, you know, my thought was, if we have divorced, you know, parents, and one doesn't live in the district, one does, you know, how do we do that? And then we have teachers who don't live in the district, but are certainly still vested in, you know, they're vested in interest in, in our district. And the same with business owners. Business owners, yeah. I mean, they all, taxpayers, yeah, I mean, but that would be anybody who lives in that are, yeah.
Well, I attended Willoughby Eastlake's Board Meeting, maybe two months ago, and I think you were there as well.
Yeah.
And each speaker had to fill out a slip, it was about that size, eight inches wide and, or eight inches long, it's whatever, write down their names, their address, and they left it at the, who had, who had it, the Treasurer?
I think the Treasurer, yeah.
Treasurer, gave, gave all the slips to Treasurer. And each person came up when the individual read it, and they came up in order in which they filled the slips out. So if they came early, they were the beginning list.
And they also limit theirs. So theirs is only limited to thirty minutes, but they'll waive it if they see a big crowd coming in. And then they also do not have any public participation, which I know there was discussion about this as well, at the end. So after we vote, there's no public participation in Willoughby. It would be like, after you vote, you would have no public participation, which I disagree with, because I think people have a right to come and, you know, criticize us, whether it's good or bad, based on our vote. I would never want to take that away from someone.
It's not so much the criticism, it's the input.
Exactly.
Their contribution to the meeting.
Right.
So if the purpose of public participation is to help to inform the Board that it's a meeting that's open to the public, and we're, we're hearing from people who are vested in this district, whether they are taxpayer in the community, or have kids in our schools, I think there's tremendous value in that. I feel it's, it's different when it's somebody who doesn't even live in this community, but wants to speak to our Board. I don't, I don't see that that's unreasonable to cap the length of time. If there were two people who wanted to speak, and we had another however many minutes left, and there were additional people who wanted to speak, that's fine, but to end up there for two or three hours.
There are, yeah, there are some Boards that you have to sign up in advance. So they don't limit it, but you have to, you have to send it in advance so that you, you don't get the back and forth.
Yeah, and, and I've also seen, they, you just sign in, you just put your name and address down, and then you, you put like a short, like, what your topic is. So then they come up and speak about that, and then once the list is done. We're spending so much time talking about limiting public participation, instead of, like, if we all collaborate and work with each other, we can be the solution to the problem. The, we have to work with each other, and we have to not worry so much about public participation, in my opinion. It's the reason why all these people are coming and speaking up, that we need to get down to the root cause and fix that. Well, I, I've never said I wanted to limit the public participation, and I think you and I know that, because we've had this conversation. But what, what I think that does, when you are signing in and talking about your topic, if we were to entertain that, is it, it stops, and, and that's not to say that during their discussions back and forth, you don't go and sign in. There's not like a cutoff point, it's not like, oop, seven o'clock, you didn't sign in, you're out. You know, you could come in, it could be at, at ten o'clock, we're still talking, and you could say, you know what, I do want to come in and talk. So even after we vote, you're saying they can stop? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's, it's not a limit, it's more of a, a record, like, and it helps organize, like, now we're going to talk about this topic, these people want to talk about this topic. They come up, the next group comes, you know. I think it's, it's, when I've seen it used, it's more for organization, not to limit. I don't know that that helps us at all.
Well, would we announce the open at the end, on any topic? Is that, now what's in there?
Yeah.
Any topic? Over the course of time, and Mary, you probably remember when we had a few times, an individual got up at the mic and solicited his business. He, he proposed an opportunity he wanted to give us, so he could make some business, but it was school, somewhat related, but it was still, he was selling.
Like a sales pitch.
Yeah. Well done, and delivered professionally, and the Board President said, your time's up, because he kept going. And I know we had a number of them, over fifteen years, Mary, if you remember. But it was, it was a problem. But it all went fast. Now we're experiencing so many. It's, how do you limit that? How do you say, thirty minutes, ten of you, done?
Only these ones.
And do we tell them, come early to fill out your slip, otherwise you're not going to speak? I mean, it's our Board Meeting, and the, the majority is speaking in terms of doing that, that.
That it is, we want to hear from as many people as we can. I think it's, it makes sense to also give opportunities to people who haven't spoken, maybe at the previous meeting, so that, you know, I think.
How do you do that?
I think people with children who are actually attending the schools right now should have a priority, because they have such skin in the game. You don't see there, there's a difference.
No more than I do. I pay taxes.
Exactly. And I've got two grandchildren. Taxpayers who want to have the past levies.
I'm sorry, three that are.
Right, our, our grandchildren are in.
Two in our school systems, one somewhere else.
Yeah. But I just, I don't know. We've had this, this pattern, and I don't know how productive it is. And I don't, I'm not sure what the solution is that you're hoping will arrive at, that will make that settle.
I don't know that that's the question. Question is, it's their right to speak.
But they don't.
If we don't want to give them the right, then just say, we'll have none. If we don't want to hear them, whether they agree with us or disagree with us.
And actually, it doesn't bother me. We've sat for a number of hours over the last fifteen months.
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months, listening to the community express their opinions about a variety of topics. Sometimes it's opposing one another, sometimes it was, you know, somebody campaigning for a position that they were hoping to be elected to, and, and so forth. And sometimes, a one or two people would have essentially the same message every meeting. And, and, or even if we voted on something and resolved it, there isn't any respect for that, that that's, you know, the Board, the Board's ready to move on, they're not ready to move on. They want to discuss that further and express their opinion. So unless we're going to go back and start over again on something that we've had a vote on, it, it just, I don't know how well it helps us to do the best work we can as a Board.
It sounds like we're both, everyone here is talking about the same thing, how do we make it more productive? You're concerned, we're all concerned, that we're not getting our business done, and it's not productive, and, and we're creating a divide, and, and you said the same thing, you know, we have to address why it's so volatile. And I don't know, do you have any suggestions for that? Because. I just think we all have to work together. I think that when we, let's bring up the book collection, for instance. If Tom and I are, you know, and everybody knows ahead of time that we are like, mm, there's some of these that we're just not okay with, maybe we have a work session and we talk about those things, and maybe we come to a compromise, instead of just going into it and three people say yes, two people say no, because those two people still represent a good amount of the community, you know. So I just think we all need to work better together and collaborate, and add more work sessions as much as we, I know it's not fun, but I think it's essential. I think we've all talked about the willingness to have the work sessions, and, you know. And, and to the point of, of the book collection, you know, there were steps going on. We, we extended, you know, the opportunity for the public to go through and look at the things. We extended time to, to gather comments. We asked if we could kind of pick and choose materials, if it was an all or nothing, to which we were told it's an all or nothing. was an all or nothing, to which we were told, it's an all or nothing. We can't pick and choose things, you know, so we did.
But that was a decision that was made to have it be all or nothing. And that's when we all could have came together and said, is this what really we wanna do?
Well, you and I met for an extended period of time, and with the curriculum committee, and went over that material. And so the recommendation that the superintendent had for us was presented. And there wasn't really a half measure, the way it was presented.
To all or nothing, is what you were saying? It was presented to us as everything?
Well, the way it was presented, the recommendation of the curriculum committee, was to make the purchase. And that censorship of individual titles was ill-advised.
But we did censor one. We censored George, which is now Melissa. So we did do it. We did it with one book, so we can't use that and say, we wouldn't be willing to do it with other ones.
Because I did specifically ask this question, and I was told, we've done it with one, we're not doing it with more. This, that the company said, it's this group or that group. You know, so, in my opinion, that's, that was, or how I was informed of, was that, that's how it was. And I believe that, you know, we did then form the curriculum committee, that you sat on, that you talked, I mean, we didn't just go in and go, well, we don't care, and this is how we're voting. There were a lot of steps. So I understand that you didn't like the vote, and you didn't like how it ended, but there were a lot of steps involved. And at some point, it's like-
But the public has a right to come and speak up about it.
Well, the public does, absolutely.
Well, that's the point of this discussion is, the right of the public to speak.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can go over how the decisions were all made in the past, regarding the books or no books, take them all out, put them all in. The issue is, the public's speaking in our board meetings. Do we, or don't we want them to speak? If we want them to speak, how much time will allow them to speak? And are we gonna limit them based upon, they have children in the school system. You don't have any, you can't speak. Do we select who speaks for those ten people?
So I think what we can do, just to kinda wrap this up a little bit, too, is, because obviously, in different districts, they have different public participation policies. And I think maybe we can pull some of the current policies. There are some, there's some good language in some of the public participation pieces that are out there. There may be some things that we might wanna add to ours, just to be more focused and productive in the, in the public participation world, because obviously, that's where the big divide is right now. So let us gather some of that and get that to you, so that you can see what else is out there. And, again, we've got that ability. We can pick and choose some of the little pieces to kind of work together and come up with what an effective policy for us is gonna be.
Sounds good.
So we'll definitely be doing that. The other thing Bill and I will also follow up on, we'll have one more conversation with the other organization for board policies on Monday, and we'll give you guys some updates on that. And then I'll look into the most recent community survey pieces to the puzzle. I know Kristin's already sent some of that to me. I'm gonna dig through Bill's files that he left me in the office and see what we can find there, and we'll give an update to everybody on the, on the survey piece to the puzzle, too. Because, again, that may, we might be right in time to get that survey back out, too, just to gather more information. Obviously, the other two components on our, on our agenda, student handbooks and school safety, again, I would propose we'd get another board agenda, or board work session on the calendars here soon. I know, Bill, we're working on the financial one at the end of October.
Yeah, the twenty-seventh is-
Twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we have our regular meeting on the, on the eleventh.
Twenty-seventh?
So twenty-
October twenty-seventh, yeah. Five-thirty was in the update, the-
Yeah.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
The financial work session.
And that will be out, we'll try to get the sunshine notice out on that Monday. So it has, so it's out. And as we always do, it'll be in the paper, and then on the district website calendar.
And we have a meeting scheduled for November first, too.
Correct, to talk about-
So ten-twenty-seven, you're thinking about?
That was the one.
Do we already get that?
Ten-twenty-seven is confirmed. That's gonna be looking at the rough draft of the forecast, and some modeling for potential scenarios for revenue, specifically for permanent improvement, based on the appropriations presentation that I did last month.
Yeah, October eleventh, regular meeting. Do we anticipate having a executive session before or after we head off?
Well, I think we've, we made the decision as a board and an administrative team to do those beforehand, so that we are not getting out at midnight, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we will have one before, because that's for Mr. Heath's goal setting.
For my goals.
Okay, five-thirty.
Do you need an hour and a half?
October eleventh. My presentation's like three hours long.
October eleventh, five-thirty. So he'll see you at three-thirty. October eleventh, yeah, five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Could we make it, I happen to be presenting that day, like, in the area, a couple days, so I'm rushing home.
The only reason why we started early for mine was because we had that, also that piece of the negotiations.
Negotiations. So six o'clock probably would start work.
I'm just, I'm racing that day, so.
Six o'clock, then? If we run out of time, we could do a little bit afterwards, just to complete for Craig, so.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yep.
Did you wanna schedule around? Did you wanna try to schedule the next work session, then? It's up to you.
Let me try and look at our calendars here tomorrow, and we'll put it in our board update on Friday. Throw some dates out again.
That's fine.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Would the intent be to have one of the companies that we, that we wanna recommend present a policy? Or would it be to be-
At the work session?
Yeah.
That would be better, make them on regular.
Probably.
Yeah, you guys figure it out.
And then you can, then you can discuss student handbooks and school safety afterwards.
Yeah, because then we can knock out all three.
Which date is that one?
To be determined. All right. Thank you, guys, so much for the conversation tonight, too.
Thank you.
I think we've got a lot to consider, and still a lot to work through.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Jesslin?
Yes.
Ms. Breiner?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero. We adjourn at eight-thirty-eight.